Well, thank you, Mr. Moon. We have our Chief Operating Officer Marty Smith, our Assistant Superintendent Jeff Plattenberg, Jessica Gillis. Jessica, is that right? And I'm gonna blank for a minute.
Michelle Ferrer is here with us today.
Thank you, Michelle. I know you, Michelle. I'm sorry, I don't remember your last name. I didn't eat lunch, but I had other business to attend to, which I need to attend to this business. And tell you, we're gonna talk about boundaries. We've had our first step where we did a lot of the research and brought it to you. And our ultimate goal here is to do some goal setting and some prioritization of factors. We left you at the last meeting with some of the factors from the research that we think need to take a look at, for you to take a look at. And I think they're all very important. And we look forward to the discussion and coming out of here with a set of goals around this work and maybe some additional looking at how we prioritize these many factors. So with that, Mr. Smith, you wanna go from there?
Okay, certainly.
Mr. Smith, before you step in, let me remind both members that this boundary policies cushion is gonna include multiple work sessions. So even though our goal is to talk about the goals of boundary policy and hopefully get to factors, prioritizing them, today, if we don't get there, we don't get there. We can continue discussion in the future as well. But I wanna remind both members that we are about an hour behind. Okay, we're right. But for this work session, we have about two hours, which means we can go until about 3:30. I wanna set aside the last 15, 20 minutes for next steps. So hopefully, a presentation itself will be brief. We'll talk about goals first, and then we'll go to factors later. So start with the goals-related presentation, and then we'll have Q and A's and discussion, and we'll go from there. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Moon. So before we begin today, I would like to thank the team for our quick turnaround, for our next steps from our last meeting. If you remember, we were before the board on February 25th. This was a rather quick turnaround to ensure the board having enough information to provide us some guidance on goals. So thanks, staff. Thank you very much for that quick turnaround. Today, we're looking for that guidance from you. We're looking for guidance as we move down the road toward prioritization. As Mr. Moon said, this is multiple meetings. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Plattenberg and team to go through the presentation. And we have, Michelle is at the table as well, in case there are any questions about some of the other items that ORC posted as part of our next steps. Just to share once again, everything from those next steps has been posted as part of today's agenda item. We wanted to ensure that we had everything together. And moving forward, with all of the things that are going to come out of the COO's office, we will ensure that all of that information is posted for the board in one place so that you don't have to go hunting and searching for it across multiple platforms. So with that, Mr. Plattenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And thank you, Dr. Brabran, members of the school board, Mr. Moon, certainly as a meeting manager. On October of 2018, the Offices of Planning Services and the Department of Facilities Transportation Services presented the boundary policies and practices of many different school divisions about the conversation that we began of the review of Policy 8130, the boundary policy. As a next step, we also introduced the 16 factors. As a next step, the school board requested these work sessions. And we had the work session in February where the Office of Research and Statistical Improvement presented findings from the review of the education research on factors considered in the boundary decision-making. We also, after the research, talked about the FCPS boundaries and school capacity. And today's intent, as Mr. Moon mentioned, is to discuss the goals. And so in your packet, we have a little bit of a review really as to how we got here. But there's quite a bit of information in there. There's, first of all, the discussion of the boundaries, the current school board policy, talking about the goals, talking about really how we got here. Then there's going on into the factors. We're gonna pause before that, as Mr. Moon mentioned, so that we can have that discussion about what the desire may be, how it aligns with our strategic plan and One Fairfax, the current policy. Then we've identified and presented in there the factors that's in the backup of that. And then further in the back of the appendix is the research of what some of the surrounding similar-sized school divisions are. So with that, the first part is, you know, really what we're gonna do is take a look at the Policy 8130 goals and discuss them for boundary policy. As I said, the factors are in the back of it. The timeline, mentioned October, February, and here we are in March. Really, and Mr. Moon said it best, for the school board to provide guidance on goals for boundary policy. We do mention that the desire also is to prioritize those factors. But as Mr. Moon said, that may be for further discussion, depending on how we blaze the trail today. Current FCPS Policy 8130, really, when you take a look at this, you have a couple of different components that align with the strategic plan. It says, "The school board may close a school, change the school boundary, or adjust a program assignment or location in order to maintain or improve operating efficiency and/or instructional effectiveness." Then it goes into basically break down some operational efficiencies and the proximity and capacity. But really, this current school policy did have what is in the current alignment with our strategic goal of resource stewardship, student success, and a caring culture. But if you break down those other components, it really looks like the adjustments would be to relieve the overcrowding, effective use of the space, avoid underuse of the buildings, and better relate our program resources to needs, reduce the operating costs, and also guidance from FPAC. The best research-based guidance really were the three overarching goals that we presented to you last time in February, fairly recently, actually. And that really was aligned with resource stewardship, student success, and the caring culture. And that really is to address the overcrowding by utilizing existing building capacity to balance student socioeconomic diversity in schools, and also proximity or to minimize travel time. Those were the three overarching elements that were provided in the best practices that we had found across the country. But really, the bottom line is, as it relates to the CIP and as it relates to building programs and boundaries, the overarching goal really is the capacity. And certainly from a facility standpoint, or from my department's standpoint, or especially as it relates to the CIP. The other two components definitely come into play. They are part of our One Fairfax lens. But really, when you look at it, the capacity piece is one of the driving things. So really, to get to the discussion and to the meat, and I'm sure to your questions, the consideration discussion of these goals really, we put some probing or some inquiry questions before you, just for the reflection. Should all the goals be equal drivers for boundary adjustments? And should any other goals supersede others in some form or way, shape, or manner, a tiered approach, or the like? So with that, that is my brief just intro to get the conversation going on the goals. And we're ready to have any further discussion or questions at this time.
Okay, thank you so much. We're first to talk about the goals. And as presented in the prior slide right before, just wanting to remind both members and public that these three things came out from the last work session, from the staff's presentation, that are the most important, either goals, goals slash factors. And I want to have a discussion about amongst these three, you think they should be given an equal weight? Some is more important than others? And if there is any other goals that we should consider to be part of our boundary policy as opposed to factors? So what we discuss, you know, think about whether what you may be advocating for is actually a goal versus factor. Because we're not gonna get to the factors until we are done with generally, we are generally done with the goals discussion first. With that, before I go to Chairman Corbin Sanders, let me recognize a couple of city board members here joining us with Chair and Vice Chair from City Board. We have Carolyn and we have Toby. Thanks for joining us.
[inaudible]
Oh, just walked in.
Oh, oh.
You are, you are, you are right behind Dr. Scott Brabran. He was blocking you. And I have a poor eyesight.
I did this too.
You did, you did.
I forgot.
Mr. Tyson, you are not recognized to speak. So, Madam Corbin Sanders, and then, and then we have Mrs. Strauss.
Thank you, Vice Chair Moon, and thank you, I'm gonna make sure I turn this on. Thank you to the staff for putting this presentation together. I do have a question as to why, how we determine what is considered a goal. Because when we set overcrowding as a goal, it's really not a goal, it's a factor. And it's a factor that influences whether or not we look at boundaries, but it is not a goal of boundaries. And partially because if we use overcrowding as a goal that we, you know, because of overcrowding, we would change a boundary, what we are doing is we are actually reinforcing the concept that boundaries in the past may not have had an impact on the socioeconomic balance of our schools, and that we actually have created some boundaries that are elongated in nature, others that are, I mean, it's a bit like, in the political world, we call it gerrymandering, but some of our boundaries look like they've been gerrymandered to satisfy a need at a specific time. But I would suggest that we take overcrowding out of our discussion of goals, but rather talk about what the goals are in the, in our boundary policy in light of One Fairfax. Because if we use our goal of One Fairfax, ensuring that the FCPS promise is realized at every school in the county, regardless of where it is located, whatever zip code it's located in, then we then have to look at what are the success factors in individual buildings. And so we do know that there are some best practices in success factors in individual buildings. Once we agree to that, then we can look at whether or not we need to more holistically look at where our boundaries are today throughout the county. Because we also know that because of boundary decisions that have been made in the past, they have negatively impacted the balance in individual school buildings, especially at the high school level.
Any comment from staff members? If not, I'll go to Mrs. Strauss.
Okay, I guess, from the viewpoint of best use of current facilities and what we added in the CIP to get rid of trailers, I guess, I would think that one reason to open a boundary is to address unusual overcrowding. So I guess, I understand where you're coming from, Ms. Corbin Sanders, but I would think within the CIP and planning for how best to use buildings to add on or to, you know, make facilities changes, certainly extreme overcrowding ought to be one factor in looking at and considering a boundary change. Certainly, I do think addressing student socioeconomic diversity is very important, minimize travel time. And while we're at it, when we talk about student socioeconomic diversity, I would hope that we would also use housing type as a proxy when we're looking at that. So I guess that would, that's my recommendation. I would think that overcrowding would be an important factor. Oh, okay, housing type, because when you have an opportunity to, to open a boundary, single-family apartments, townhouses, that can be a proxy. You don't always have the best information on free and reduced meals, but housing type can be another proxy and very helpful for planning going forward so that you have some apartments, some affordable housing to be added to perhaps predominantly a single-family boundary.
Any comment from staff members?
Yeah, the only thing I'd like to add is, one of the things from the best practices, I think was alluded to, when we took a look at this, and the reason why we have these, these three goals that kind of permeated to the top, was the, the main thing was, that was evident and pervasive, was capacity, capacity, capacity as the driver for boundaries from all the other school divisions and then the other components. And in regards to housing types, Ms. Gillis, we, we do look at the housing types, as the board will recall, is a driver for different types of student yields. So I think it's a relevant element to take a look at. And it is something that we can get into deeper about the different type of housing types and what we've seen in terms of their production of students.
Okay, thank you. Are you done with Mrs. Strauss?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I have Ms. Palczek to be followed by Ms. Evans, Mr. Shor, Karen Kishkamara. Anybody else who wants to be put on? Okay, we'll go to Ms. Palczek then.
Thank you. And I appreciate this. And I know we're going to have a whole variety of perspectives, and this is quite a complex process. I guess, first of all, in response to, I think, both of my colleagues, being in the district where, as we call it, there's a lot of red, where a lot of overcapacity in the middle of the county in Providence, I think definitely to me, both, those two are the top factors, right? The One Fairfax policy, but also what it means when I have schools that are 136 projected capacity, which I know we're going to go visit tomorrow. And so I know that was one of the factors that definitely was seen in the research to have an impact on student learning. So if the goal is more about impact on student learning and on being fiscal stewards, right, of how we use our facilities, I think those are important goals that we need to consider. And at this point, right, with traffic walkability, if having kids go a very long distance is also seen as having a negative impact on their sleep, on their ability to be connected to their community, you know, I think we can think about factors versus goals. But as we're having the goal conversation, you know, how those factors are affecting our goals of our, you know, student achievement, equity, and access to education, I think we need to consider those. So I guess those are kind of, some of my top ones are around ensuring equity and access and programming, and in ensuring kids have access to schools that are not overcrowded, and buildings that at some point, I have some where they can't open a new classroom and have higher class size because there's just no space and no place to put a new classroom. And so those do become some major concerns. In addition to that, and one thing we haven't discussed that I know in my conversations with community members, and I know Ms. Gillis had done some research in what other districts do, is the process. So I know we haven't discussed kind of the predictability versus some of the way we do it now, that kind of happens from year to year or from two years out. But I don't know if we can have more conversations from the research you have on the ability to say, right, this is going to happen in five years, but will grandfather anyone until then? So I don't, I don't know if there was more research on that, or just the process. I know for many parents, it's just knowing what's gonna happen five years down the road. So that is some of it. And then on a side note, is that I have so many neighboring boundaries, and some of our neighbors here, is what is our relationship and our goal as one school system, in our partnerships with our surrounding and included cities and towns? And so how do we, how do we have those conversations when our boundaries overlap and where our county might have different policies than our cities and towns?
Thank you, Ms. Palczek. You wanna, staff wants to respond at this point, or any comment from staff members?
No, one of the things that we were discussing really was the comment that was talking about some divisions in the research, really, and I don't know if it was research, but the data that we collected regarding the, the process that they went through. Our boundary process in the past has been where feedback based upon the community's influence into the process, the transparent process we do, has led the board to make determinations about grandfathering in and phasing in of certain things. Other school divisions that might make a pronouncement, have that conversation, say that in five years. Some of the things we found in that was that they did not allow as much transition as we have here. And that's, that's all. And Ms. Gillis has something else here.
Okay, I have Ms. Evans to be followed by Mr. Shor, Jean Karen Kishkamara.
Thank you very much. And I do think that we're headed in the right direction with these three, we're considering these the goals, Mr. Moon, is that what we're?
And this was the slide from basically last work session, as to be three most important things for us to consider, whether they are goals or they are just most important factors. But they stood out from the last work session. So we are starting our today's discussion with that slide.
So I would say that, that the top two are the most important. I think I would give a little bit more weight personally to number two, because that's a huge, huge issue for our school system that we really need to address forcefully. I would say that socioeconomic diversity at all of our schools and equity in curriculum would go hand in hand with that. So I would, I would add, I would recommend adding that as part of the goal there. I do believe that I would kind of turn around number one a little bit in terms of addressing overcrowding. I would say that we want to, our goal would be using our existing permanent capacity efficiently. So that would mean not only addressing overcrowding, it would mean those schools that are under capacity as well. And because we want to use existing capacity, I think that that's important too. We are trying to get rid of the trailers to the extent we can. We'd like to get rid of the modulators. And so I do think that, that using, using existing capacity efficiently, I do think that that's got to be a high goal of ours. We can't just build out of, of problems at an individual school. So, and we do have a number of schools that really do need some relief and need it sooner rather than later. On the third one, I would, I see where this is heading. I think we need to be, I think we need to think about this a little bit more, because I think what we really are saying there, it's not just travel time, it's access to the school. We want students to have easy access. We want parents to have easy access. We have some situations where it's easy for, for parents to get to the school, even if it's farther away. There are others where it's, it's difficult for one reason or another. So I think we have to think in terms of not only travel time, but just access, not only for, for students, but to, to parents. Because, you know, I've seen situations where it does make a difference in a school if the parents can't easily get there. And I realize there's also a pull and tug there. And for socioeconomic diversity, we might want a student to go farther away. At the same time, there's a value to being close. So I think we have to think about that. So I would put number three, personally, I would put number three a notch down from number one, and number two.
Okay, I have Ms. Shor to be followed by Ms. Kishkamara.
So obviously, my colleagues are aware I wasn't here for the February 28th work session. So I guess I'm gonna go back to what somebody else, I think, Ms. Corbin Sanders, what you were saying, is, the question is, what's a goal? And I don't know what that discussion was, you know, and what we're driving to in terms of a goal. Before I go further into that, I will say that in the attachment that's provided in board docs, and this is pretty critical, the response to 281, which is the breakdown in travel time statistics by school and region, that link is broken. That doesn't go to anything. And that was, that's pretty key information, I think. And the problem is here is that, you know, if we're using a One Fairfax lens, there is a significant disparity in travel time in some areas versus others. You may have many elementary schools, you know, within a couple square mile radius in one area of the county, and in another, you know, you can drive five miles and not hit one elementary school. And so we're a very diverse county in terms of our, you know, our geography. We have 400 square miles and don't have, you know, the same, you know, the same issues in each area of the county. So I don't know what is meant by a goal. If you say you're gonna balance student socioeconomic diversity in schools, and you're gonna support a diversity goal, are we, what are, what are you saying? We're gonna have a certain percentage of each subgroup in each school? Are we gonna redraw all of the boundaries in the county to do that, to achieve that? I agree with Ms. Palczek. You know, I've got schools that are, you know, at the top of the overcapacity issue, you know, 130, 100, probably close to 140% over, with more and more trailers ever added in parking lots for students to attend. And then, so is that, is that the issue? Are we, are we putting children in longer bus rides to schools to fill them up while, while other kids are having shorter rides and sit in empty classrooms? The other thing that I don't see here, and maybe it's a subset of the first one, is, I think I'm on year seven of the SAC room usage. And our agreement with the county is that we have brick and mortar elementary classrooms that are not used for academic purposes during the day. And many of those, in fact, those children are actually taught in trailers during the day while the brick and mortar classroom sits underutilized. So I'm not sure entirely what we're talking about in terms of goals. I think the biggest issue is CIP accuracy. We can't do anything on goals unless we're projecting, you know, five years out and actually showing the work five years back. This is, you know, a core issue of mine and has been and continues to be. So if we keep showing a CIP that doesn't show the numbers that we've projected by school and what actually happened, then I don't know how we kind of get to this. So that's kind of my top level.
I hate to do this, we're on a three-minute.
Yep, I'll listen to what everybody else has, but that's right off the top of it.
Okay, any staff members want to comment on that?
I want to do one thing that may help the board for the rest of the conversation. And then I think I want to make a comment too that I should have made at the beginning, but I could make now. Jeff, can we go back one slide, I think, to the existing reg or existing policy that the board has? Thank you. The, just to help the board a little bit, the first sentence of this policy, this is the current policy, "A school board may close a school, change a school boundary, or adjust a program assignment and location." Here it comes. "In order to maintain or improve operating efficiency and/or instructional effectiveness." So I would say to the board currently, we have two goals currently in our policy. Those are the two goals. Now, Jeff, can you go ahead a slide? Or, you know, go to the, where we were? Thank you. When we did the last work session, and Ms. Schultz, just to bring you in, our regulation has 16 factors. So we did this best practice research on these factors. Here are the three factors that we saw rise to the top. So I just think, yeah, staff, we, yeah, that staff saw rise to the top. So.
On, on research having an impact on achievement.
So I would just go back to say, in our current policy, we have operation, operating efficiency and instructional effectiveness as our goals. We have 16 factors, and we went to you and shared, staff from the review, eight were related to, in the research, eight we didn't find a relation. Here are the three biggest. So this may help you as you have your discussion around what are the current goals, what's embedded in policy, and the three factors. Something else that I knew come up, had come up from last time, I just want to say it. I know there was some discussion at the last work session around previous communications I made to our community about what you all called, again, I'm just saying, I didn't call it, but I'm clarifying now, a moratorium on boundary decisions. I did share with the community last May, some community members, that I would suspend administrative boundary recommendations for the 2018, 2019 school year until we could engage in conversations regarding revisions to Policy and Regulation 8130. We are doing that dialogue right now. I want to be clear that my comments to the community about that do not prevent us from moving forward on the boundary adjustment process that you've already approved in the CIP. We're going to move forward with the six recommended boundary adjustments with the dates that are already in the CIP as scheduled. Now, I'll be honest with you. I do hope that what conversations come out of this may help us ultimately with the final decision-making around those recommended boundary adjustments. But we are moving forward with the boundary adjustments as presented in the CIP. There is not a moratorium on those boundary adjustments. I was talking about last school year specifically and around the administrative boundary recommendations. I was talking about last school year specifically and around the administrative boundary recommendations. And I just wanted to bring that piece full circle for you all. Okay?
Page 46.
The six, but Jeff, what page is that in the, and can you just list those just for, since we're in the public record?
Sure, absolutely, I'd be glad to. It's page 46 of your CIP.
Can you repeat the page just?
Page 46 of your CIP. The priority recommended boundary adjustments on that page by region and pyramid and the potential timeline information is, Region 1 has Oakton, the school is Fairfax Oakton, the elementary, the new school. The boundary potential was, potential scoping in fall of 2020. There's been some conversation about that. The second one is Region 5 Woodson, the school is Wakefield Forest Elementary School. Capacity relief is the objective, and this will be in the spring of 2019, the beginning with an effective date, anticipated effective date of school year 2020-21. Region 4, Region 5 Robinson slash Woodson, the school is Oakview Elementary School, Creek Elementary School. The objective is eliminate attendance island in the spring 2019 with the anticipated effective date, school year 2021. Next one is Region 5 Woodson, Little Ron Elementary School, capacity balance, beginning in the spring 2019 and an anticipated effective date, school year 2020-21. Region 2 Justice Pyramid, Glen Forest Elementary School, capacity relief, beginning in the spring of 2019 for the anticipated effective date of school year 2020 and 21. And then the last one is Region 2 Marshall Pyramid, that's Shrewood Elementary School that was alluded to earlier, for capacity relief, fall 2019 inception with the anticipated effective date of the school year 2020-21, rather 22.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that? If it is a quick one. So this is exactly what I'm talking about. I'm not entirely sure, and I'm looking at this with, across to Ms. McLaughlin. I don't know how Region 4's priority became eliminating an attendance island when I know the status of Centerville High School and its overcrowding pressures and one of our smaller campuses and all of the additional trailers that have been added to the campus. Like, why is, why is eliminating attendance island for Woodson more important than a crushing, you know, 130?
Well, Ms. Schultz, no, no, just to make sure, Ms. Schultz, I do not want the Robinson community to have a misunderstanding on this. This is as much to benefit the Robinson Pyramid children who go to Oakview, so please don't make it about Woodson, okay? I just want to make sure that's real clear. This is not about addressing Woodson's needs.
Okay, Ms. Shorsh and Mrs. McLaughlin, let's do this. You know, we're not going to discuss CIP or actual boundary today. I think what Mr. Plattenberger did was basically for the public to read what's on page 46 of a CIP. And let's talk about, let's focus on what you are doing for today, which is boundary policy as opposed to specific boundary adjustments.
I'm just making the point that these are listed as the priority recommendations, and I as a board member didn't have any input as to what these priority recommendations are and, and what this means, which priority takes place? Like overcrowding in a building or moving students? Like, this is exactly the conversation we haven't had, yet it's listed as the priority, and that's the point I want to highlight.
Okay, that was, you know, the bolt connection to adopt the CIP. And if that needs to be changed, I think, I think that's the discussion we need to have at some other time, not today. So thank you, Dr. Braybrand, for referring us back to our Policy 8130. I was going to actually wait until we're done with all our first round and to go back to 8130, but since Dr. Braybrand mentioned this, just keep in mind, we have existing policy. And if you could, in your comments or questions, could make reference to that policy and, and let us know if you believe that that needs to be changed, then if so, how that should be changed? And also, that's on slide number four, and also going back to slide number six, that's from the last work session. Just to start thinking about this, among those three, let me say this, if we don't have overcrowding, we don't have a capacity issues, are you going to do the boundary change to do number two? Are you going to do the boundary change for number three? Start thinking about those. Okay? So I have Ms. Karen Kies-Kamara to be followed by Mr. Wilson and Mrs. McLaughlin.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moon. I'd like to go back to the policy itself because I, as I'm listening to everybody, I feel like we need some clarification between the goals as opposed to some of the factors. And thank you, Dr. Braybrand, for bringing that out. You know, operating efficient, improve operating efficiency is one of the goals highlighted here as well as instructional ineffectiveness. I think that I would like for us to talk about some other goals such as maintaining the community. I'm not sure that's the best way to say it, but people being able to enjoy their community and grow and live in their community could be one of the things that we are focusing on as well as something that Ms. Evans mentioned with respect to equity in curriculum and/or And then, I'm not sure that diversity actually goes into the goals, I think it falls more within the factors. I am hearing the discussion about capacity as if it is a goal. I think what we're actually talking about is the efficient use of our facilities. And I'm not, you know, I think that's a significant consideration, I don't think it's the only consideration. I will say that with respect to factors, I think we need to have a more extensive discussion. I mentioned to Mr. Smith that I had some concerns about some of the information relied on, I think it was provided by ORC, as they relied on the research brief. And this brief that looks like this, if you print it out, does talk about the importance of diversity, be it racial or socioeconomic, and how it is a positive factor for academic achievement. Reading this, it's a little unclear as to whether this document is recognizing that, and so I'd like to have some offline discussions with respect to that. So I, I would like to focus, Mr. Moon, on how we want to add to those overall goals and then including additional factors in light of the research in brief from 2017 that was included in our materials. And I believe socioeconomic was included in that. And it is, those things are supported by the research, which I think is less recognized in the ORC document. I think it's the clearest way that I can mention that. I would also say, one of the things that was mentioned was, Ms. Strauss mentioned housing type. I think in some areas, a townhouse can cost a million dollars. So I'm not sure.
Apartments. Rental apartments.
Apartments can be 500,000. I mean, the price where you are makes a difference. And so housing type alone doesn't, in my opinion, is, we need to clarify what housing type means.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Ms. Karen Kies-Kamara, three minutes.
Okay, now, and the last thing I would add is long-term impact on the community. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Any comment, any response from anyone? Okay, this is good, you know, we are having.
I just agree, I agree with Ms. Kies-Kamara on that last point on housing as a proxy, that doesn't work. Because housing as a proxy, a single-family house in one area of the county could cost, you know, a fraction of what an apartment goes for in another. So I support that notion.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Shorsh. I think, I think in your absence, we have implemented new rules, about three minutes, and then, and then go back. All right, I have Mr. Wilson to be following, Mrs. McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. So just to clarify, the slide six goals, these don't track exactly like pulling out factors from, from our, from the, from the current list of 16. They're really sort of, they're sort of concepts that we, that we pulled out from our discussion. These, these were not factors that we discussed and we said, hey, these are the three factors that we want to make, you know, our goals. I think these were suggestions by staff to guide our discussions and not really to sort of say that these are the three that we, we have landed on. I, I actually think that maybe this conversation is obviously pulling out good ideas from board members and passionate feelings. You know, when I look back at the One Fairfax policy, it doesn't get into boundary changes as it's got, you know, a bunch of definitions and 16 or a bunch of different areas that we are supposed to consider in the county involving, you know, the, what we can do in the county with regards to the One Fairfax policy. I think that maybe a general, you know, comment in the policy that, that we take into account One Fairfax policy because it's a much broader concept. And, and maybe we don't need to spend time, you know, sort of trying to pull out, this factor is more important than this factor, and these are secondary conditions, and these are primary, and this one remains a factor, or this one shouldn't be a factor. I think that all of this is going to be very dependent on individual schools, individual communities, and how, and how, when we look at those factors, which ones rise in importance in those circumstances? Because I, I just think that this conversation may not be as productive as we will hope it to be, we may actually just get more mired down. And I think maintaining the high-level commitment of the board in evaluating school reboundaries might be a better approach.
Any, any comment from staff?
We'll have to go back to the tape, but I, I think, I think my point was just simply that, you know, One Fairfax policy provides broad guidance on programs and activities in the county, and really in a broad range. And I think that, that if we use that as general guidance, it's our, it is our policy, that, that maybe 8130 as currently drafted is pretty darn close to what we need. I do think that there are a couple places where I would make a change. I think that three years, and putting that as we shall not revisit a school within three years, doesn't leave open the possibility that this board could make a mistake, and we may need to unwind a decision within three years. And also I think that the, the, the idea of having a report that, that identifies school eligibility for boundary changes in the future is a good idea, which was one of the additional items to consider.
Okay, thank you. Any, any comment from staff? And I have Mrs. McLaughlin to be followed by Mr. Taranakofax.
So first of all, I want to say to my colleague in Springfield who I've worked with for the last seven years, I, I just wanted to make sure you knew since we both share Robinson that this is, you know, my, my work with staff is something, is something we've talked about a while, but I very much in agreement with you that when we look at our boundary prioritization, we also need to look at size of impact. So our elementary school attendance boundaries that I certainly have fought seven years to try and fix, that will help both Robinson and Woodson. I would concur with you that it may not necessarily rise to the level of, you know, good. So I want to comment on something that I have repeatedly said for years, it is not captured up in these three bullets. I asked staff to bring back information on it, and I'm not sure that it's been done yet. It has to do with the psychosocial and emotional impact of boundary changes. And it's, it, you know, is so important when we talk about disruption and changes and the impact it has on children. And I don't know why this continues to not be captured up there, but I've, I've spoken to it again and again. I'm thankful to live in a county that even though it's not articulated up here, and it should be, it has been something the county has been committed to, which is that we try to minimize disruption to our communities. And why do we do that? Because we know of the psychosocial and emotional impact on communities when you do lots of boundary changes. And I've cited Wake County Public Schools in Raleigh for that same experience of what that does to a community and what it does to then people pulling children out of public schools and into other private school options. And I know we don't want that for Fairfax County. So I would like us to somehow, in the next time we come to a conversation as a board with the superintendent, that somehow that get brought up there. In terms of the second bullet, balance student socioeconomic diversity in schools, I, I don't want to wordsmith here, I don't like how that's captured there. I don't think it's about balance. I think what it is, is we, we know from the research that there is a tipping point of, in poverty in our schools. And so, you know, whatever verb that needs to be, I don't think it's about balancing. Again, that is something that Wake County did, where they were changing their boundaries almost on a yearly basis to keep having their socioeconomic numbers look the same across the division. And that just, again, with high mobility caused a lot of disruption to the system. That said, I'm proud of this board, I'm proud of the school division, the fact that we don't want concentration of poverty in our schools when at all possible. And that has got to be a paramount focus. We know concentration in poverty is hard for all students to be as successful as they can be, and particularly for our underrepresented minority populations. So that's got to be there. But I think, Mr. Wilson, you're capturing what I'm hearing several people talk about, which is, in our county of 1.3 million people, there, it is very different. And so we may not have a one-size-fits-all focus when we're looking at boundary needs and changes, and I guess I have a go back now.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I have Mr. Taranakofax. And, and, and I want to ask both, you know, both members to think about, you know, why we are not do boundary change, what is causing the boundary change as we discuss further. Mr. Taranakofax.
Why and what? Okay, I think those are two good to keep, keep in mind. I, I was supposed to be the meeting manager, and then I had to not be at that meeting where we had the first discussion on this. And so I'm a little, I, I just reached over to my colleague when I was standing over there, I said, I'm a little concerned, and I think factors versus goals for consideration. And I think we're, I'm a little caught on the semantics of that because I don't see how you can't, I mean, it's, it's nonsensical not to have overcrowding as a reason for boundary discussion. I mean, it, it, it just is. But I, I think I'm willing to listen, to try to understand the difference between what was said as a factor versus a goal. And I guess, I guess, Mr. Wilson, he, he alluded to it, but he didn't ask the question, and I guess this is one of the question, were these three top, if you want to call them factors or goals, because I think we're confused ourselves by what we're trying to state, were these three agreed upon by the board? Okay, you can, okay, so no, everybody's saying no. So this was just a teased, pull-out version of what staff may have thought would be the things based upon discussion, what the board thought.
Well, if, I'm sorry.
And research practices. Can you hold my time right there so he can answer that?
Sure. Yeah, I just wanted to say that this was based upon the, the data that we collected and really what the best practices were. So we put them in the order, and as I said, the capacity, capacity, capacity was the pervasive. So those other two elements, all three of those were like the three that were at the cream of the crop. So that's the purpose of what we provided, not making any judgment, really just to get the whole conversation. And then to try online, the policy, it is a school board policy, and provide you with the information that's come out through these conversations.
Right. So, so then I, I guess I'm going to get back to the why and the what. And when, and it kind of in my mind is a chicken versus the egg, right? When you have number two, balanced socioeconomic diversity, so program placements, equity in programming, equity in curriculum offerings, those, those, yeah, equity in actual facilities, equity in academy programming, equity in advanced academic programming, but the list goes on and on and on. So was it because we put certain things in certain schools that people gravitated to that and saw another school as less welcoming or, or, or less what they wanted for their child? Or was it? Or was it because there was a certain socioeconomic balance there and we weren't able to, or we, we, we had other goals that we needed to meet and then we're not able to put in certain kinds of programming, program offerings that we were in other parts of the county? So that's, you know, when we talk about it in that, from that lens, it's a, boundary adjustments can help, but there's a whole lot of tentacles and factors that are, that are moving there. And my time's done. So I, I mean, those are just comments for my colleagues to consider as we move forward. And Dr. Braybrand, you sound like, you look like you have something to say regarding that.
Dr. Braybrand?
I just want to help clarify one thing for the board. You know, the policy, which is 8130, and you can tinker with that, but the two things in it right now, the language is operating efficiency and instructional effectiveness. Our, our, our regulation has had 16 factors. So this is what I want to tell you as superintendent and staff. When you have 16 factors, somebody's going to, it's like trying to do, and you're asked to do something like a boundary with 16 factors, you're not going to get all 16. Someone's going to say you left out factor 15 or you left out factor four. That's where I feel, again, just being honest, I, I came here as superintendent, boundaries, we haven't done a lot of them in a while. We passed one Fairfax. The clearer staff has about the work to do so that when we bring it to you, which is a feedback I've heard from all of you, like, hey, we want you to listen, Scott, bring it to it board ready. When you have 16, it's hard to then bring it and not have a board member go, this factor clearly wasn't looked at. And I think that's what our community has done too. If there's a prioritization of factors, it helps, I think, the community know, well, why did, there's still the explaining, there's still the communicating, but there's still transparency on which ones are you lifting a little bit higher and how you want the policy to be implemented. And I thought Mr. Moon said something at the last one, and again, I wasn't in the seat, I was in the division, but I really was involved in other things. I wasn't paying attention probably as much, that the board tried to prioritize those 16 down years ago with a board before this board, and it was just too hard to get there. I want to take a crack, maybe the board won't get there. It's going to be the same six, 16, but then you're going to have to sort it out as a board. If we can kind of upfront, you all get consensus, no, Scott, I actually, I want these three or this one or two of the three or five. I think we'll be able to bring you better work that will have better consensus upfront. So that's the spirit of this, this work. And I don't know, maybe that'll help you with some of the additional go backs and conversations you have.
Well, no, just thank you. And I, I, I think you've said it twice now and I think we all need to hear that and I think the public needs to hear that, that the two factors or two factors or goals, bullets one and two up there are already pretty much what we have in our current policy language.
Okay, thank you. I think I have.
No, not, not the second part.
I think I have adjusted all the board members with the first round. I have many board members on the go back list, but let me, since I haven't spoken on this one, let me, let me try a minute at this point. Is, you know, looking at policy 8190, I think the first sentence is operating efficiency and or instructional effectiveness. I mean, they sound to be good goals. Whether we need to tweak that further, I am not sure at this point. Whether they're, you know, we're not going to end our discussion today, you know, depending upon how next hour goes, we can continue this discussion next month or two months from now after maybe we are done with a budget first. But, but I think they look pretty good to me. And also looking at, you know, okay, let me, let me, let me stay on 8190. 8190 does not just talk about boundary adjustments, it talks about program assignment changes. And when some of my board members talk about equity in programs and et cetera, whether, whether that's a program assignments versus boundary changes, whether we're going to change the boundaries to provide equitable opportunities for students to be able to access certain programs versus keep the boundary but assign or redistribute the programs. Those are two different issues. So wonder whether 8190 should be split into two different policies, talk about 8130, I'm sorry, 8130, 8130, whether there should be one policy for the boundary change alone and another, 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 another policy for the program assignments. That's something we may want to think about. And also amongst those three, whether they are goals or they are, they are factors or they are more important factors, I want to ask my board members, again, I'm not looking for your definitive answer today, but start thinking about in the absence of capacity issues, in the absence of a capacity issues, are we going to change the boundary for demographics, demographics reason? Are you going to change the boundary solely based upon travel time? So something for you to consider. And, and what that, if we decide to do that, what that would mean for the next four, five years? We, board looks at the, you know, policy change, you know, we don't, we don't set a policy to stay there on a permanent basis. So we do it, you know, for, for, you know, certain regional period of time, we hope the policy will remain so the staff can work on it and they start implementing it at the same time. If a situation changes, we can always, just like out of what we are doing today, we can revisit the policy in the future too. So with those things, I hope you consider that as we go back to the, our go back list, starting with Corvus Sanders to be followed by Mrs. Scherz, Mrs. Strauss, Ms. Karen Kishkamara, Mrs. McLaughlin to be followed by Ms. Evans. Am I missing anyone? Okay, I have a Ms. Parchuk, so I have a Ms. Corvus Sanders.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Moon, for trying to frame this a bit more. I think we need to go back to when we talk about operating efficiency. A goal for this board should be to get rid of our trailers and modulators. That's the goal. How do you get there then is if you were to say we were going to remove all the trailers, what would we have to do with our boundaries? And what would we do with the boundaries to ensure that we have instructional effectiveness? I would actually say optimal effect, you know, or instructional excellence because it's more than just effectiveness. We have effectiveness in all of our schools. We see that with our, you know, the beginning of an equity dashboard, but we really do need to look at how do we ensure that we have the most positive, excellent academic environment for all of our students as well as, so I would suggest we would put as a goal, getting rid of trailers and modulators. Another goal would be to expand the capacity of our buildings from the standpoint, not of increasing capacity, but having pre-K in all of our elementary schools. We've asked for that number because that will drive where we have capacity. And what do you do to get there without actually building on? So a last piece of a goal, when we just talk about that facility piece, getting rid of modulators and trailers, serving an expanded student base with a pre-K program. And then the other goal would be to minimize the increasing cost for our capital improvement program so that we can actually be more efficient, effective in reinvesting into major maintenance. And the only way we do that is by addressing the problem we have today with all of those trailers and modulators, which we have put in rather than dealing with the bold issue of boundaries. So, and the other pieces, I would ensure, I would build into anything we do, a periodic review of our boundaries so that we actually change the mindset within this county, which is as we grow, the first objective is not to build trailer farms behind or learning villages behind our buildings, but rather to look at our boundaries as a way of ameliorating any challenges within an individual building.
Okay, any staff comment? I have Mrs. Scherz next to be followed by Mrs. Strauss.
So just a couple of quick go backs. One, the thing I didn't see anywhere here is public input. You know, that's the, the most significant portion of this. So not only were those three factors or goals or whatever not apparently voted on at the February 28th meeting, and I, I do have a little bit of a question about the age of some of the research. And I, I use that in comparison to, you know, what I'm looking at, some of the other jurisdictions. You know, if we don't have current research available to us or if research hasn't been done, but you look at the size of some of the, you know, like Palm Beach County, 108, I mean, spot on to the size, student capacity of each facility to achieve optimal utilization, best interest of students, Philsboro County, Florida, maximize the efficient use of district facilities, San Diego at 129,000. So those, if in the absence of, you know, research at from 1988 or 1995 or whatever, if we don't have anything, this sort of is the duplicate for maybe what is a current best practice. The other thing is, I, I agree with Ms. McLaughlin on the, not only the cost, you know, there's nothing here about cost. What is the cost of doing a boundary to achieve a goal to include a factor that only this board has talked about that hasn't involved public input? What is the, I mean, boundary change processes are very costly. So that's costly to staff resource time, financial, but the, the mental cost, the, you know, the cost on families of having to go through that and what that means to students is significant and it is very, very long lasting. So I, I am concerned about, you know, the efficacy of some of the data, if it's very, very old. And I look, for example, thank you for fixing the link while we were talking, and I'll just use one example and then I'll yield the rest. You know, general education route, 60 minutes travel time or longer. Region one, zero for elementary. Region two, one for elementary. Region three, 19. Region four, 18. Region five, zero for elementary. 19 times the impact, you know, 19 times, 19 routes, you know, of children that have 60 minutes or more at an elementary age level, you know, that is a massive impact to an elementary age child who is getting off the bus because they're penalized as having the latest elementary school start time, and that means they're getting home just before 5 o'clock. So on the One Fairfax, you know, you want to talk about direct student impact, that is very, very significant. I think we have to seriously consider the public input side because of that degree of impact.
Okay, thank you. Anyone wants to comment on that? Any staff member? Okay, I have one.
I'd only quickly say, travel time, if, can we go back to the other, there's like two slides that we keep going to. This was our final work that when we pulled all the review, even old research, new research, looked at all the other, and then the appendix, right, Marnie? We have the, don't we have in the appendix here, the goals from other districts?
It does go to scope though, the scope of a problem, you know, for, you know, how many elementary school students may be impacted versus, you know, a, a high school, I mean, the scope, the size of the problem, if you will, the circle graphs, how many children are impacted by a potential change? It is missing from this conversation.
Okay, before I go to Ms. Strauss, as far as the public input is concerned, I mean, that's going to be up to the school board, whether we're going to hold a public hearing on this, whether I want to do, how I want to engage a public as we change our policies or regulations. So nothing has been decided and we're not excluding public input. I have Ms. Strauss to be followed by Karen Kishkamara.
Thank you. With regard to policy 8130, and I am looking on slide five. In the last line, it says to maintain or improve operating efficiency and or instructional effectiveness. I would think we would be better off taking the word or out because part of what we are talking about is student achievement, instructional effectiveness, operating efficiency, I think, would refer to sort of the building use and transportation, all the rest of it, but we're also looking at instructional effectiveness, which is student achievement. And I think that perhaps gets back to the issue of programming and meeting the needs of children. The overall language on slide four, the rest of the policy, I rather think speaks well to where we're going. My sense is we want to emphasize again, student achievement and that has to do with all the other pieces. And it does, I still think on slide six, the three bullets on slide six, I, I think that those are important as more important than some of the other factors, particularly if we agree that instructional effectiveness or student achievement is a, you know, when we are rearranging things, that obviously that is important because that has to do with program placement and all the rest of that. So, but I'm glad to hear that it appears that people do agree that overcrowding needs to be addressed and we need to quit adding trailers. So at the very least with boundaries, thanks.
Thank you. Any staff comment? If, Mr. Smith, did you want to say something?
I think that as we think about the three factors that are here and we looked at the research, so we, we looked at the research and research told us that these were the factors that were, that were best supported with regard to student achievement. And these were partially the factors that were brought to the board previously. And so as the board is thinking about goals, whether you're thinking about goals, factors, it's really the lens by which you're going to look as you are considering boundary adjustments. And we've had discussions about whether or not we should look at program placement, we should look at a variety of factors. It's really about looking at these three items as the, the areas that were most supported by research, not to discount the other factors, but, but what is the, the, the primary focus that the board will use when addressing boundary issues within the county? That's the drive for this particular discussion. So I just wanted to reiterate that.
Okay, Ms. Karen Kishkamara to be followed by Mrs. McLaughlin.
Okay, just real quickly, I want to start with, because I hear some comments about what level at which we are talking about this. It was my understanding that Dr. Braybrand was looking for clarification from this board with respect to what these factors are, and that's why we're digging in a little bit. I will say, when I came on the board, I noticed that there were requests for maybe limited boundary changes and the, and the conversations were primarily happening between perhaps one or two board members in a particular part of the county and the rest of the board was not aware of it. That's part of the reason I think this discussion is so important because we are trying to elevate those changes to a more transparent, transparent level so that the community then understands what we're doing. I think this highlights something Ms. Scholz said with respect to, you know, even on some of the stuff on that CIP list, we are not clear how it got there. Those are discussions that we should be having as a board. And then the community needs to know what we're using as a guideline to make those decisions. So I will, I just wanted to make that, I want to make two comments. One, the easiest comment comes from this research brief, which is from 2017, and it pointed out high mobility as, as, as one of the important things to include. And so I think we might want to talk about how we look at boundary changes when we have a school that is impacted by high mobility. And then the other thing is that oftentimes we have seen over time in Fairfax County resegregation of our schools. And so we need to talk about what that means and what we need to do to make sure that we are honoring One Fairfax. And so that brings me to my last point with respect to the policy, I believe was it 8130. I think Mr. Wilson is correct. One Fairfax needs to be in there because it is the overall guiding principle that is helping us to make these decisions.
Any staff comment? If not, Mrs. McLaughlin to be followed by Ms. Evans, Ms. Parchuk and Mr. Wilson.
I first want to start off referencing something that Dr. Braybrand said about 16 factors versus the three that we're seeing listed here now. I, I can't help but think of the Goldilocks analogy, too little, too much. So I think 16 can be too much. Again, I applaud prior boards that came up with the whole, the whole list. Again, I applaud prior boards that came up with the holistic list. And I mean that genuinely. Because as a social worker, I believe that the more you can take into account how any decision's going to impact your community, you have a better chance of hopefully arriving at the best decision possible. So the 16 factors, again, the tale of two Fairfax's where we have extreme wealth and extreme poverty and everything in between. You need 16 factors potentially. But I do, I do think that you could certainly identify the ones, as people have talked about, that are kind of a paramount driver. They would be almost universal. And I do think those three capture what's sort of a universal focus on any, you know, boundary consideration. And then taking up sort of, Mr. Wilson, I think you've referenced this analogy in the past. Whether it's, you know, the restaurant menu and, you know, we're gonna look at the different à la carte choices that you might add on to any given boundary consideration based on what reflects the needs and the challenges of that particular area where you're gonna do a boundary study. So again, I don't think we can prescriptively say for all nine magisterial districts and all 24 pyramids. This is going to be how you're going to interpret and decide your priorities for whether a boundary change is gonna happen or not. So that's, that's kind of where I'm coming from is, to my colleagues, that three is a little too little. I do think that if we're talking about what's paramount, it's concerning to me that in a school division and a board that always communicates out that student achievement for each and every child is our paramount focus. And that's not captured in those three, and it's actually not captured in our policy. Our policy just seems to be so focused on, you know, operational effectiveness, and, and that's an important component. But Ms. Corbett Sanders, you said instructional excellence. And I actually think that is something we do want to put into our policy. And Mr. Moon, you suggested perhaps we split them up into, I think you said, boundaries versus programming needs. I'd be curious to see more of what that looks like. And boy, three minutes goes by so fast.
Left. Okay. Any, any, okay, any staff comment?
Well, I, I would like staff to comment a little bit on what I just said, which is that, you know, I, I, I would hope you might.
I'd be happy to comment.
I would hope you might speak to at least, isn't three factors as a driving factor perhaps a little too small? And the fact that we have a school board policy which you don't own, it doesn't even talk about instructional excellence in it.
That's a very good point, which we don't own. So therefore, you know, that, that's the purpose of having the probing questions, so we could have this dialogue and conversation. And certainly, just like when Mr. Moon is the meeting manager, pressed us as staff to get to a point to have this deeper conversation. It lends itself to the comments such as student success, scholastic performance. From a facilities, and as it relates to the CIP, if people read this document, it covers everything that was mentioned. It talks about the capacity, it talks about recommendations by each school. We have a number of letters, A through H, that we go through. However, that said, it doesn't get to the granularity of addressing it and moving it forward. So the balance is between, that's why the struggle between goals and factors. Okay, three goals, some of the conversations made, some of these goals sound like they should be factors. And some elements or sub elements, however you look at it, to be factors as well. I do always like student success to be a piece of it, absolutely. I do definitely agree with the capacity, capacity, capacity. But in the context of the conversation, as to how we provide programming and how instructional services, Sloan and his team, how they've addressed providing that equity lens across the division and the great strides that they have made. That's a deeper conversation, absolutely. So you're right, it is inextricably linked. And that's why I'm like in a church nodding my head at some of these comments. And I don't really know quite what to say.
So let me, let me just overlay on Mr. Plattenberg's comments. I already see a few tweaks that you'd have to the policy. For example, again, I'm not, I'm just listening and I'm not, it's the board's policy. You had Ms. Strauss talk about taking the or out and making it and instead of and/or instructional effectiveness. And then you had, I think, Ms. Corbett Sanders and a few others say, scratch effectiveness and put excellence. So those are just tweaks. Here's what I think. The research from the last work session said of the 16 factors, eight were supported by academic research, eight weren't. So if you're just asking me, well, I'm gonna go ahead and just leap it out. The eight that aren't supported by the research, I would, if you don't want to eliminate them, I would at least put them lower tiered. The eight that are important, I would elevate. And then the question, is eight too many and do you want to pick only two or three or four? I still think it's this, we're gonna do the work no matter what, because you all have signaled, it's time to move forward. FPAC has signaled, it's time to move forward. I just want to do work that builds in consensus as much upfront? Instead of having the community or the board come and go, I don't believe you did this. I don't understand why you did this. I don't understand what you did. The clearer the parameters are upfront, the better. And when you have 16 factors, you're gonna fall short in at least one of them. And I feel that's where people have come to the board and went, well, you didn't address this. And I think having some sort of tiering or prioritization is actually to the community's advantage, to the board's advantage. And I think it's ultimately Jeff, right? It's to staff's advantage in doing the work, Mr. Plattenberg. It's to our advantage to have it prioritized so that it doesn't feel like we have to come back to the table multiple times for our boundary recommendations.
It really provides the conversation of transparency, yes sir. Everything you were talking about to get us a little more focused.
Brilliant.
And we've just posted the document from the February 25th, it's slide five, from that last presentation. That shows the eight of the 16 that are supported by educational research.
Okay, thank you. With that, I have Ms. Evans to be followed by Ms. Peltchek.
Thank you. And I first want to thank the superintendent for reiterating that we can move forward on our priority boundaries this spring. Say the, that we have approved in the CIP. I want to point out the, the, the board did approve the CIP and the priorities there. For one, the Glen Forest community, I know, has been waiting patiently, so I'm glad we can move forward with that. If we could go back to slide four, since Mr. Moon has focused our attention on that. I think the, the big thing that's missing here, the, the giant thing that's missing is the socioeconomic diversity imbalance. So that needs to be added in there. And I think when we talk about operating efficiency and instructional effectiveness, we probably need to be, say what we really mean. You know, we're talking about efficient use of, of facilities' capacity. But I, and again, I would also add equal access to curriculum and equal access to school activities as well. And I think that, that would get to the travel time in a different way. I mean, we do know that there are families who will only too happily have their children travel long distances for what they want their children to have. We know that. And there are plenty of examples within Fairfax County. So I don't think travel time in and of itself is what we're talking about. We're talking about access to programs, equal access to curriculum, school activities, and a sense of community. So whereas, I, I hear you on sleep, believe me, I hear you on sleep. But we also know that if someone will certainly go another 10 minutes to get the program that they, that they want. So those are my comments on that. I think that at the end of this, a lot of that's redundant after the, in general. I think we can look at that and say, you know, if we get this first sentence right. A, a lot of that is included in things like using our facility, our capacity properly. And I think, you know, to Ms. Corbett Sanders' point, I think the, the idea of trailers and modulars, removing that. Whether that's in here or if it's in the factors, maybe that's a factor as opposed to a goal, I don't know. But I think that's kind of a subset of using our current capacity, current capacity efficiently. So those, those would be the things I would add is, is equal access to curriculum and activities. And again, the, the big thing being the socioeconomic diversity imbalance. Because if we just, if we change the wording a little bit, I think we get to the, the, the efficient use and the capacity issues.
Okay?
Mr. Moon, if I could comment to that?
Yes.
I really like and appreciate the comments that relate to, that was the difference between the travel time comment and the proximity. The, the, the boards have passed policy. Now, this last time it was revised was when I first got here, so it was May 2013, that, that this policy was revised. That, that word proximity, I think, was an attempt to try and cover some of those softer, but much more important about the ability for communities to have that robust support for a lot of the different programs. So I do like the comment. And the other thing is, I wanted to recognize the vice chair of FPAC, Mr. Dan Amatov, who's here in the audience as well. I forgot to recognize him. Oh, in those last, the eight, the eight items that you, that were up here, I forgot to mention at the time. Those eight items were a result of the research on student performance. They weren't to look at it from the lens of, because of the question. So they have it in the right context when you first just look at those eight. And you think that we were presenting that in terms of resource stewardship or from a facility or capacity standpoint. It was the question about the research related to student performance. I want to make that clarification.
Okay, thank you. I have Mr. Backerbein.
I just want to echo what Ms. Corbett Sanders said, all of her remarks were excellent. The, I, I actually like what staff presented to us, the three, the three categories. And I would support moving forward with that. But that's just me. Thank you.
Okay, I have Ms. Peltchek to be followed by Mr. Wilson and Mr. Dan Arcofax.
Thank you, and I appreciate this conversation. First of all, before commenting on the boundary, I know a comment was made before about the timing on page 46. I did want to say that at least the Fairfax Oakton School is now slated to be aligned with Mosby Woods. So maybe not necessarily the timeline that is printed on page 46. I just want to clarify that. As we have this conversation, I also wanted to point out in the research and why I think it's important that we look both at, as Mr. Moon was saying, the boundary and the programming. I do, one of the quotes from the 2017 study said, "Equally important is whether students of different ethnic groups are exposed to one another during the school day, even in very diverse schools." I think the research really spoke to the fact that it's not enough to have a school be, you know, reflective of diversity, but also the programming and how the students are interacting. So I think we need to make sure that that research, and I appreciate all the follow-up, is included in there. I guess I had a, a couple of questions. I know it talked a bit about health and safety impacts of travel time. One question I've had that I haven't heard us discuss yet is, and mainly from my community, because we have growing schools, is the safety and security concerns. As we talk about the trailers as being a goal, it's a goal in and of itself. But also, I don't know if you and your staff were able to, or have researched, I mean, maybe did not see. As when we talk about, you know, size of a school, elementary school, the impact on student, you know, safety, wellness, security when it comes to whether it's trailers or, you know, access to schools and where they're located. So that'll be in a minute, just a question I've had that I don't know that we've considered. And the appropriate size, do we discuss appropriate size of a school building? And then finally, when it comes to community input, 100% agree with Ms. Schultz. That's why the question was raised in our last meeting. I know you have some information in the follow-up question number 284. So I do think it's important for us as, as a board to look at the recommendations from staff about how to engage the community and community stakeholders in the process of the boundary conversation. And perhaps not today, but I do appreciate that you have outlined there, the meetings, the outreach. And, and would be very interested to see who the stakeholder groups are. Because I do think that's critical. And I just wanted to clarify that that was addressed by our last meeting and is in those responses. And sorry, in the last one, I loved in your research, it talked about not just distance, but I was always a walker and the ability for kids to be able to walk or bike to school. As we talk about, you know, student health, well-being. I, I love that that was included as an important factor that we haven't discussed. And so walkability to schools and the, and the sense of community. Because finally, as we, some parents may be able to hop in their car and drive. Some of my parents cannot hop in their car and drive to school. And then a mile is a pretty far distance for them. And so I hope that we consider that in there as well.
Okay, thank you. I, any, any comment from staff?
Just real quick, the comment about safety and security. You know, certainly the desirability, and we did discuss this in work sessions years ago, where we talked about the research on the size of the school, and we're well beyond that. All of the size of our elementary schools and our middle schools and our high schools, and to include the secondary schools. Because of the size of our, our populace and because of the density, we're well beyond that. We, we did cover through that. But to the point about the administration aspects, the feedback I'm getting from principals and I have throughout my career, whichever state I've ever served, and also the work I do internationally, is that when you do have capacity to the extent where it's putting pressures on the existing systems, the trans, the, the transition time and things like that, put tension on, on the populace and the age group. Mostly middle and high, so the secondary level is where we've seen that between students. But, you know, certainly we can try to get some more research on that and see if we can provide you with anything else substantive.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Kind of as a side conversations, I know that's led to some of, you know, the, the, the request for boundary changes in some of my schools. And then as we start to look at, you know, we can't buy more land, so how large do we build some of these elementary schools? So yes, we could build one large enough for the, the entire capacity, but what's too big, right? Is 1,200 too big? Is 2,000 too big? At some point, I think we need to have more clarity on that conversation.
Okay, thank you. I have Mr. Wilson to be followed by Mr. Arcofax.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. So I want to pick up on, I think, the point of transparency that Dr. Braybrand brought up. Because that actually ties in with, across a broad range of issues that this board has dealt with. Feedback that I get back from community members in their sense is that the board makes a decision. They don't know how the decision was made. And then there's community engagement after the decision is made. At which time they're given the perception that they might be able to affect the decision, but that's actually not true. The decision, the decision has been made and it's implemented. And, and some of the community input is then reflected in the implementation. So I guess my feeling is, is that, you know, and this is something that I've talked about before. Parents are the first and most important educator of their kids. They need to be brought into this process. So if you're parents at impacted schools, I think maybe we could add in some surveying before decisions are made of parents. Because we, because we can't, we're sort of making conclusions based on assumptions that, that all parents in a school that has trailers would rather have their kid somewhere in a classroom and not sitting in trailer. That may or may not be true. I think it's a laudable goal to reduce the number of trailers, of course. But as a, as a parent of four Oakton High School students, they all have sat in trailers. I would much have preferred to have them stay in Oakton High School and sit in a trailer for a class or two than be transported to another school. Because stability in communities really matters. It matters to parents. And, and, you know, I think that we just, we, we need to bring them into this and bring them in early in the process.
Okay, I have Mr. Arcofax.
Just commenting on some of my, what my colleagues have said, so you have an idea of how I'm thinking. I do think when we talk about new policy language, it should contain verbiage that, that, that adds equity in curriculum offerings, equity in programming, and equity in after-school programming. Much of what the, the Ms. Evans had, had talked about, well, several of you had, but I think Ms. Evans, you, your, your, your comments resonated with me most. Mr. Moon, I'd be happy to listen to you about separating this into boundary versus programming. But I think that defeats the purpose of this. And I think it gets back to the problems we had very, very much with these administrative boundary changes, where things were tweaked and moved and board members were unaware of what was happening and, until the last minute. So I, while I'm never poo-pooing another colleague's idea, I would be happy, Mr. Moon, since I'm talking about you. If you, you know, I'd be happy to entertain and listen to your ideas further. But I do not think that is going to solve what we, what we need right now. And, you know, I- And, um, you know, I, I read this three times, so now I understand that blue is what we're currently having, there are eight other factors that, that show, I, I mean, not, not four, three other factors in addition to the ones that are there. So five are in, five are currently in FCPS policy, and, and three are not, and I think each of those, yes, best practices, and, uh, based upon what, um, I, I just said, you kind of understand where I am, because it is, um, if we separate it, I think we're going down a road we don't want to go down.
Since, since Mr. Darnaco Fex asked for, uh, eh, eh, my position, I mean, I don't have a position on that, I was just making a suggestion for board members' consideration and discussion, since a lot of board members talking about program assignments. And, and we are, at, at this point, primarily dealing with more on the boundary, boundary issues, and what's going to trigger a boundary, a boundary adjustment, and, and what you're trying to accomplish through boundary adjustments, as opposed to assigning program. Programs can be assigned without even changing the boundaries, or it can be changed along with, along with the boundary adjustments, but that's just something for us to consider. Uh, so with that...
Because wait, I had a few seconds left, you, you did comment to me.
You did?
Yes, I did.
Okay, okay.
I just, uh, I, I had a little over a minute. I, I just want to add one more thing, and this is not something that we talked about, but, Mr. Wilson, it, your, your comments triggered, um, about, I, I do think we need to get the public involved, you know, soon, um, as far as comments, but I also, that, that brought to mind, um, you know, other places where I have family, and other places where I've just researched about school systems, we may want to put in our policy, if we are going to have a regular, every ten years, every five years, eh, exactly, and, and, and looking at this again, because we here in Fairfax are, we have not done this in a long time, and it, whether it's the end of this board, or the new board that takes on this very, very big, um, boundary discussion and what's going to happen, I think the community needs to be aware that this may not be the last time that it happens, because everything was just kind of set in stone for a while, and we have a lot of mobility, as you mentioned, we have a lot of things, eh, moving parts now, and there are school systems that have set time aside, and the public understands that every five years, every ten years, it is, it is, um, looked at, and, uh, I think that maybe have to be considered language, I'd ask my colleagues to think about that.
Okay, uh, I was only responding to earlier, I was only responding to Mr. Darnaco Fex's, uh, uh, request, and I'm gonna take my, my three minutes, or less than that, to, uh, uh, provide my input on policy eighty-one thirty. I think eighty-one thirty looks pretty good, as is, uh, perhaps draw away with the second part of the policy from in general, and, and, and accepting, uh, you know, Mrs. Strauss's advice, a suggestion about removing OR, just make it N, and also accepting Ms. Karen Corbett Sanders's suggestion about, eh, changing effectiveness to instructional success. I think amongst those three, eh, eh, more important factors to our goals, we talked about from the last work session, we saw on one slide, the overcrowding, that deals with the operating efficiency, and travel time may also go to the operating efficiency as well, and also a, a instructional success, if that affect a student's time issue basically, because being on the bus much longer, and affecting, you know, daily schedule, you know, affecting amount of sleep that a student's, eh, eh, may not having enough of that. Uh, so, you know, from my perspective, I mean, those operating efficiency and instructional success, operating of efficiencies are obviously under our strategic plan, that's a resource stewardship, and instructional success is student success, two of, four, you know, the other two that, that the pre, the premier workforce, that's not really have to do with the boundary policy, and, and what was the, the other one? I'm escaping, killing culture, perhaps part of that, part of the killing culture, right? Maybe, maybe incorporating that a little bit, and right here. So that's where I am on the policy. I mean, from my perspective, as a meeting manager, with a twenty minutes left, probably we, we're gonna have to spend at least ten minutes minimum on the next steps, next steps. So I have a three on second go-back list. Um, Mrs. McLaughlin, and Mrs. Scholz, Ms. Karen Kishkamara, okay, I'm, I'm putting down the name, Strauss, Corbett Sanders, Corbett Sanders, anybody else? Okay, with that, I'm gonna have to limit each person to a ninety seconds. Okay, Ms., Mrs. McLaughlin?
I, I'm just gonna say once again, this is where, how we do good work versus we do rushed work. Um, I, I am troubled that people want to defend the existing policy. First of all, if you go to that prior slide of the eight factors, I challenge any board member with a mastery of, under, of doing a cross-reference check, those five in blue are not in the policy. They're not. So, Mr. Moon, I respectfully disagree.
Oh, no, 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 you, you misunderstanding, I'm just talking about the policy language itself.
I know, but the caveat at the bottom says, "Factors highlighted in blue indicate factors in the current policy."
I'm sorry.
Those factors aren't captured there?
No, no, no. All that I'm saying is, what's on slide number four? I'm not talking about other things, the language itself.
Now, I, I, I know, Mr. Moon, we might be talking about different things, I'm just trying to say, the way this policy is written right now, and based on this very significant slide that tells us, these are the eight factors that are supported in research, I would say to my colleagues at minimum, before we make any changes to the policy, and I, Mr. Moon's saying he liked this board member's little thing and that thing, just chop off the other half, the policy itself needs to be rewritten. The policy itself is not comprehensive enough, the board owns the policy, and the little, if, the fewer words we put into the policy, it leaves it up to the superintendent and staff to put into regulation and decide how they're gonna do it. And if we don't give clarity in our policy, they're left to just decide it on their own. And that's not going to be helpful to the public, and it doesn't serve our role for governance. So I'm concerned about that, and my other point was just simply about engagement with the public is important, but part of the community engagement for community input is to bring contextual and important information to the public. So before we invite their information on how to improve our boundary po, policy processes, we also need to bring the research and best practice to them, so that they can also appreciate how and what changes we might be willing to make. And that's, that's about engagement through education as much as just soliciting information, when they haven't had a chance to study it the way the board is studying it now. But, um, Mr. Moon, my, my closing remark is this, there is no way leaving this work session, that this policy better be brought to us with any revisions, we're gonna need time to actually either refer it to governance, but we're, we're not anywhere near walking away from it.
No, we're not, we're not ending the discussion today, it's just a part of a, a multiple discussion, work sessions to come. And also, as what I said was, you talk about, that's only sub-paragraph number five of eighty-one thirty, I'm, I'm, I'm only looking at that one, I'm slide number four, that's all, all that I'm saying.
Well, and I appreciate that, and I think that's the problem with this PowerPoint slide, is it's giving us one subsection five?
Yeah, we, we'll discuss factors, factors later.
The next time, we need a PowerPoint that's got all, the, the, the policy i, in full, not a little cut out.
Okay, with that, I have, uh, Ms., Mrs. Scholz, to be followed by Mrs. Corbett, Karen Kishkamara, Mrs. Strauss.
And thank you, and I, and I beg my colleagues a little bit of indulgence on the ninety seconds, because I wasn't here for the previous conversation, and, and this is really, um, crucial. Um, the, the scope and severity of the problem that I was highlighting in my previous comment is so critical, um, because, just because there is research out of the, out there, doesn't mean it's best practice, it just means that there's research. And what may work, um, in another school district, um, their, their, their transportation may not be the worst in the nation like ours, they may not have very disparate types of areas like our four-hundred square miles are. And so sixty minutes, for example, on a bus for an elementary school student, is not the same problem as sixty minutes for a high school student. That's a different scope and a different severity, um, and, and, and that's what's not captured in any of this. And I don't know that, you know, I lived in San Diego half my life, I don't know that you can direct San Diego issues to here and say, "Well, if San Diego does it here." And most of the other school districts are based on utilization, and so if utilization is, is the driving force, well, maybe it's because that's important, that does take into account, um, resource stewardship. But when you talk about program placement, and Ms. Darnet Kofax isn't here, I agree with her on the program placement issue, when you have schools that don't have any academy programs. And so you have entire populations like Robinson, if you want to be, if you want to access, you know, if, if we're talking about promoting work readiness, not just college readiness, but work readiness for our students, those students have to give up periods and be placed, um, and go to distant locations in order to access academy programs. So that becomes, program offerings is very, very important. It also is for the stabilization of schools that have declining populations, is, you know, and, um, Bailey's is the exam, is the exemplar of that. So, you know, right sizing our schools, you know, and, and having more proximate, I think there was a reason back in the day where we used the word proximate, because proximate didn't equal travel. You know, every place else in the country, people talk about how far something is, we talk about how long it takes to get someplace, because twenty minutes could be a mile. And that's, that's, that's the problem that we're dealing with, is old research, disparate research from other areas of the country, doesn't necessarily fit. And I think Mr. Wilson's right, I think we need public input now. Uh, um, just because there's some research out there, it doesn't mean it's best, a lot of it is old, there are factors here, um, that differ by grade level, you know, something that is impacting, you know, the number of students, and the last time I did the calculation, I still remember it, the number of students in us, eh, that are in, uh, uh, trailer classrooms instead of the brick-and-mortar classrooms, based on the average, uh, classroom size in our district, is six thousand and twenty seats could be recaptured. That's a lot of seats in elementary classrooms, of kids sitting in trailers, instead of, and, and elementary years, the formation of your time in a classroom that doesn't have a bathroom, and that you have to, you know, move in and out of the building, lost learning time. All of these are things that we haven't captured here that are unique to us. So, um, a, a, a split feeder, for example, a school, fixing a split feeder of a school that has eight percent or five percent of its population, being split-fed versus fifty percent, half the students are going to one school, half the students are going to the other school, that's completely different social impact on those students than, you know, eight kids out of sixth grade being peeled off and sent to a different school. So the, we, we've missed part of this conversation, I don't know, we still have ten percent of Fairfax County that doesn't have an elementary school. Did you think we were gonna get through this conversation without me bringing up resource stewardship and the fact that we have empty building while we have overcrowded classrooms, and we've added trailers, and that Clifton Elementary still sits empty? I mean, there's a lot more here that needs to be part of a public conversation than us just saying, "Well, there's some research out there, and we decided it's best research, and we're just gonna add, you know, a couple other things." So, I'm sorry, but that, that's my last work session, this work session, go mind.
Okay, thank you. Any comment from staff? All right, I wanna remind board members about ninety seconds. I have Karen Kishkamara, Mrs. Strauss, and the last one is Corbett Sanders, and Ms. Evans, all right?
Okay, um, um, I'll just answer that real quickly, I would support surveyed parents with respect to priorities. Um, I agree with Megan with respect to that list of eight. Um, I am concerned that when we look at eighty-one thirty, there are three, four, five, um, phrases all related to capacity, um, but we still have not addressed the other list of the other eight. Um, and I think that the fact that we're not looking at academic achievement for a school system, I don't know, seems a slightly ironic to me. Um, so, eh, I am concerned about the transparency, um, I think that we should also look toward how we're gonna, uh, talk about, this part of this conversation should look at how we're telling the public we are going to do boundary changes in the future. Um, I agree, there has been, at least even for me as a new person, I haven't understood how things have happened. Um, so, you know, I want to make sure that what we're talking about is on the table now, is what's in the CIP, is, if there's anything else additional that we don't know about, it would be great for us to find out about it right now. Um, I, I think that that deals with, I want to make sure that we deal with that list of eight. Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Wait, split feeders. I'm happy to look at split feeders, I think we need to look at all of them at the same time. Where I had a, a problem was when we start looking at one, and then we don't, then we're not looking at the comprehensive impact.
Okay. I have Mr. Strauss next.
I am assuming that in next year's CIP, staff will be recommending some high priority boundary changes.
Absolutely, I mean, if you take a look at this CIP, it, and when I said the A through H that staff recommends, you have some schools that aren't on the prioritized list that have issues. When you look at the pages that talk about elementary schools that were alluded to before, that are in overcrowding position based upon the percent of overcrowding, you will see on the elementary schools, the majority of those that are in the upper tier, if you will, are on that page forty-six. If you look at the middle schools, you will find most of them within seventy-eight to eighty-five percent or so, so they're looking pretty good. Why? Because we've done some renovations. If you look at the high schools, you'll find schools such as Centerville High School, it's way overcrowded, however, listed in this CIP for an addition in the out years, much like Justice, much like Madison, um, but you won't see McLean, which is one of the reasons why the community had mentioned, you know, "What about us?" Because where you see those percentages on the high school, and for example, staff listed H for McLean for looking at a re-boundary, all of those percentages drive where things kind of move up into that CIP process, and are part of the discussion. But the problem is, when you look at the depth and breadth of the, of what's in this document, and the desire to have many people in the community to have as immersed an understanding of how all of these factors come into play, and then effect, we show split feeders in this document, we show the information in this document. So it is, i- it's a lot when, it's like drinking out of a fire hose, and the time associated with this is a lot like the budget process. The calendar year doesn't expand to have enough, is not afforded enough of when the student enrollment data is provided, the September thirtieth data, when it's the verified and vetted data, the number of eleven days that we have as staff to go ahead and, oh, I'm gonna go on a, on stool preaching, so I'll stop there.
Thanks, just for, just for transparency, the Langley Community's organized a meeting tomorrow morning to talk about the CIP, they're concerned about declining enrollment, so, thanks.
Okay. I have, I have Corbett Sanders, to be followed by Ms. Evans and Ms. Patrick, anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Oh, thank you. I agree, this is not ready for primetime, um, we need a lot more conversation about this, so I think we do need to have at least one more, uh, work session on just the goals and priorities. However, I'm going to suggest that we may want to hire an outside facilitator to work with us in how to address this in the context of one Fairfax, because what we're talking about, when we only talk about neighboring, you know, overcrowding at this school, not overcrowding right next door, is we are reinforcing the, um, economic segreg, segregation that this county has gone through, um, because of the way our boundaries are currently designed, where we have very long elongated, um, boundaries, in some places we have tighter, um, boundaries in others. So I would suggest that we take the recommendation that FPAC made to us a couple years ago, bring in an external, um, source to work with us on our best practices, a holistic approach of how we deal with, um, boundaries in this county in light of one Fairfax, because otherwise, we are doing, we're nibbling around at the edges, guys, we're gonna fix this pro, problem here, and we may inadvertently create another problem somewhere else, or, um, reinforce a problem that starts to percolate. Uh, additionally, when we talk about our boundaries, I also think we have to talk about our pupil placement policy, uh, not necessarily the policy, but the implementing regulation, because when there was a, um, change at the state level on, um, pupil placements, the regulation got changed, and we had a hundred and ten students move out of an, out of a high school, which then created capacity at one school... which then created capacity at one school, pressure on another school. And, um, none of us really were aware that the regulation got changed. So this work is important, impacts how we staff schools when we, um, when we move people around. We have less people in a school and therefore we have, um, less resources and then less high level courses or over, uh, after-school enrichment. So it is a domino effect when you start moving things around. So we need to have somebody work with us.
Okay, I have two more members, uh, Ms. Evans and Ms. Patrick, and then we'll wrap up.
Uh, I'll be brief. I just wanna say that I do agree with Ms. McLaughlin and Ms., uh, Keys-Gamarra that, um, eighty, I believe eighty-one thirty needs to be rewritten, um, to include the, um, more important factors um, that, that we've outlined. Um, so I don't think that that's, uh, ready at all. So I, I would, I would advocate and support a rewrite of this.
Okay, I have a Ms. Patrick.
Yes, thank you. Just a very brief comment. Um, and I can't remember if it was Ms. McLaughlin. Someone brought up before, um, the, the numbers we're able to publish, we publish in the CIP, um, and their level of accuracy compared to, I know what you're able to see as staff. Um, in, in addition, the, um, the presentation that Mr. McElveen and I saw and that Ms. Evans shared from Stephen Fuller shows that, uh, Fairfax County, the city of Falls Church and city of Fairfax are going to see about a forty-five hundred person decline in our zero to fourteen population in the coming, I think it was till twenty thirty. So I know I get a lot of questions about this in the community. I know there's things that we feel we can and, you know, for privacy reasons cannot share. Um, but I, I do hope and, and request that we be able to say as we're creating these boundaries, because why would we change something that, you know, maybe in ten years is not needed? So I know on the schools committee, we're trying to help address this and I know staff is communicating with staff on the county side. But I do think it's something that we need to be able to figure out how to communicate, address, because I am not comfortable saying approving any boundary change where the CIP is saying it's not going to be necessary. And so I think that's an area that we really need to figure out, uh, a way to wrap our heads in our collaboration around the, the projections. Thank you.
Okay, I have, uh, Ms. Darnett Kovacs.
Yes, um, Ms. Corbin Sanders' suggestion, um, because we have talked about that, I, I think the last time when I was meeting manager for this first thing. Mr. Plattenberg, um, when we talked about the need perhaps for an outside consultant to oversee this process, you, you, and I don't wanna put you on the spot if you don't remember your answer, but, um, you talked about a holistic kind of approach to boundary and, and you said it would take some time, like what's your, even with an outside consultant, if you could talk about what you think would be a, 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 a process that would allow, you know, more conversations like this for the board to have, um, allow for community involvement, changes and, and for it actually to occur.
Certainly, uh, Ms. Darnett Kovacs, I mean, what I've said since I came here, since looking at it, having grown up here, having been a part of this community, having started here in nineteen eighty-three and then in eighty-five as a young budgeteer, um, working through the process of seeing, uh, my mentors and the growth of this community and the transition and being part of all the economic development, the revisioning programs, and a part of such significant board action items such as Bailey's, uh, upper, such as the later high school start time, the blueprint initiatives and, and spearheading those groups, seeing those train, changes and transitions. It touches on many of the touchstone points that were made by all of you. When you talk about, uh, a change, it's to, not only to engage in the communities, to begin the conversation. And the beginning of the conversation is really not just to have awareness, but to inform many of the comments that many of you have said individually and collectively as a body. That providing that process, to have the conversation that we have these challenges before us. And we believe that as a community, as a county, as, as a large county, but as a close tight-knit family, we have to begin those conversations to explore further what it means to us into the future. When we talk about the One Fairfax, when we talk about how we're coming together on so many fronts, how does the school system of today meet that of the future? And that conversation, beginning with individuals that are much like a strategic plan, where there are professorial people who've done dissertations, who have their staff, who work on getting communities together to engage in that conversation to see what it would look like. FPAC is an extension and has done so on previous boundary adjustments that have been difficult conversations by reaching out to the community. It's to begin that conversation, to elicit that feedback so that that can be reported back to the governing body. And because we have such a large population, that takes time. It takes time to not only sit like this so that whoever it is that would come in would try to get an understanding through work sessions and workshops to find out exactly how we want to communicate and articulate to our communities to make sure that they understand that this is the beginning, much like we've been talking about this policy. This is the third meeting on the policy. We understand that it's not a fait accompli or anywhere near being baked. But the reality is, if we don't begin those conversations, we will never get to the endpoint. And my experience has been that those conversations take a lot of time. I have said that it aligns, in my opinion, from my experience of doing this stuff for a long, long time, that when we take a look at the new high school that we're gonna be needing and our projections in the out years for the silver line and the innovation area and the impact of the approved dwelling units and how that fits into the planning commission schools committee and how it fits into the comprehensive master plan and all of our furthering of our conversations and working together as a part of this One Fairfax, will all, I think, come at the confluence. And my prediction is that five-year, five to seven-year of beginning a conversation before any kind of implementation or action, by making sure that there's community feedback and total transparency, it is that process. And that's the kind of thing that I've thought of. But you have changes that occur all along the wire and that may support or detract from moving forward and something like that. I, I hope that answers the question.
It does. Thank you. I, I, I guess my other, can, if I can follow up, because you've said that, so this process, that, uh, comprehensive manner that we're talking about could take five to seven years. Do you have, um, a thought process when it should be looked at? Like I just kinda threw that out there before, like, like, a, a, again, like where, how often should we be looking at this? In a comprehensive manner, or do you think it like, and if you don't have the answer now?
Well, um, capital improvement facilities plans are updated every three to five years and they're generally supposed to be done in that regard.
Right.
And that's looking at a master planning standpoint. That's not boundaries and community input. If you take a look at the study of what was done at Wake County, and people often refer to that, um, the fractioning of the communities and the termination of many superintendents and assistant superintendents are part of the process of it, are pretty much textbook ways to take a look at those studies and see how to improve upon them and how to not, um, replicate those errors of the opportunity. Is that?
So, let, let me, let me, let me, let, may I, let me, let me, let me, I, I, you guys got my attention on that one. We're doing our best work. If the board thinks a private consultant can come in to be removed from the staff to help shepherd the process so that we get the very best work for this county and the community input, neutral input, right, from a neutral third-party player, then let's do it. And I'll accept it and our staff will accept it as the next step. Um, what I really wanna do is, we have decisions to make and I want guidance from you. Otherwise, I'm just gonna use the policy we have, but I think that policy, this is just why we're here, that policy has been seen ultimately while it was the best we could do. It's ultimately played out in a divisive way in the community and we have to admit it. And I am not wanting to move forward with what we have to make major, I know we have smaller things, we have the CIP, I just said earlier, I'll move forward. But we've got bigger, bigger ones coming and I want clarity from the board before we move forward. So if an outside consultant you feel would be, uh, help us shepherd the process better and get our best product, we'll be more than glad to be supportive and I know Jeff and Marty and the staff will work with them to do it. But if we're gonna do it, I wanna do it with a, with a, a lean to speed, uh, not so fast that the, uh, community's not involved and the board's not involved, but to get it done because five years is gonna go like that and these decisions, the process in which to make the decisions needs to be done, frankly, I think within the next year or so, we need to have the framework, um, we need to have the framework in place. So that's what I would say.
Okay, with, um, Ms. Darnett Kovacs as the last one to speak, uh, let me, let me try to wrap up this work session. Uh, that, I mean, we had, I think we had a good conversation today. I never expect, anticipated that this was going to be the final, final discussion on anything. Uh, and so, uh, we're gonna continue in talking about the goals and hopefully, you know, factors to follow afterwards. Whether we're gonna be hiring outside a consultant to do the rest of the work, in my mind, is a little premature at this point. Even if we hired outside a consultant to do it, we have to have an agreement to what the outside consultant would be doing. Uh, so, so that requires a further discussion. At the same time, based upon my own experience, this is deja vu about what happened about a dozen years ago. How, uh, the board, long, long ago, wrestled with the issue, this issue and came up with this eighty-one thirty at the time, as it is. And, and I also wanna ask board members, go back and take a look at eighty-one thirty in its totality, what it contains. And many of the things you, you mentioned as a part of your concern and questions and suggestions are all included in eighty-one thirty under subsection, subsection nine as implementing considerations. And that's where I think the staff was trying to seek, seek guidance from, from us. Whether they should be left as is, they should be changed, something should be removed or added, prioritized for, for, you know, for implementation, but we haven't gotten that far yet. Staff was ready to present that, but I knew that we would need much more time to talk about a, a goals first, what you are trying to accomplish before we get to how to do them. Because those are factors coming to how to do them as opposed to what and why versus how. So with that, could you have a next steps? The first one is from Mr. Wilson. Was that Mr. Wilson, yours? What is that?
Mr. Moon, I have a process question. I'm now on, it's gotta be the fourth or the fifth public dialogue on boundaries. I repeatedly asked for what is the psychosocial emotional impact of boundary changes. It's not listed there as a next step. It's not been listed, I, I just, I can't figure out.
So, so you, you can put that on. I mean, I, I didn't do it.
I know you didn't do it. I'm just trying to figure out and I.
And I agree.
Uh, so I, I didn't do that. So, uh, I'm, I'm asking, the number one seems to be from, uh, Mr. Wilson, right? Whether that's your language?
Yeah, that's not, that doesn't capture it completely. I, I think it needs to be pinned down a little more. It's, it's, it's parents and, and, and specifically factors and priorities with respect to their school where their children are attending. So that, so that they contextualize it in, in their responses, not just in general. I think it's, it's more important in terms of the specific.
Their school and their, their pyramid. I would say their pyramid.
Yeah.
So, okay, we're gonna put, we'll just look at the language and then we'll go one at a time to see what we really mean, exactly what you mean. So, uh, I ask board members to take a look at their respective advocacy, next steps, and what the language captures, what you are, what you're advocating for.
I, I think number one captures.
Okay, number two, does that capture what you're advocating, Mrs. Schultz?
No, no, um, I think it was fixed by the, um, by the link. But the, what I would like is, um, is, is staff input on the scope and severity of the factors that are being considered. So, you know, if we're talking about something that affects, you know, fifteen students versus something that affects, you know, like a Centerville High School affects, you know, you know, thousands, I, there's no, there's nothing that's been presented to us that discusses or presents information in terms of the scope and the severity of the factor.
You mean the factors we have not yet discussed or what factors we have discussed?
I'm not sure I. Whatever we are gonna discuss.
I don't understand, I'm sorry, I don't understand what specifically you're asking them for.
So, we're being given, we're being told these are quote-unquote best, um, that, this is, these are best practices. And if you look at the research, some of the research is old, it's like nineteen eighty-five and nineteen eighty-eight. And so, um, but, but what, what does a best practice mean? And how does that, what does that have to do with the problem, the specific problems that we have? And the relationship that, with those factors? Um, if you look at school overcrowding versus, um, a, a travel time problem, if you're trying to fix the travel time of twelve students who are over sixty minutes, maybe that's a tiny little boundary administrative change that those students could go to a school that's closer if you engage the public, because that's a small problem. Or if you're looking at, are we gonna fix a, um, a attendance island before we address? I mean, we, how many students are being affected by something? How, how big is the scope of the problem? And are we trying to fix small things for small populations um, before we fix very significant things for very large populations?
I guess, I guess from staff's perspective, they could say that they would, they would like to have a guidance from, in a board as to what the board desires the system's effects. So that they could come back with what the, uh, that's.
Nothing has been, I mean, nothing has been scoped for us. We don't know how many students are being affected by overcrowding. How many students are in trailers daily versus, um, not? I mean, we don't have, we have nothing to discuss on a potential boundary change. What, what is the scope and the impact of a potential boundary change? What's it going to fix versus a, a priority that may have a, a smaller scope but impact many more students? That's, the, we, we're just using terms as factors without the quantification of what that term means in any specific application. This is very normal.
So, Mr. Plattenberg, could I ask you this way? The, in the universe of the sixteen factors plus few others that were presented to us last time, and there are some of them are research, uh, with a research supported and some of the factors without research backing. Do you think you can quantify the severity of the factors, of individual factors as related to, I guess, FCPS or is that something?
Yeah, I, I think some of, some of what was touched on by Ms. Schultz were really factors to look at. So for us, it's kind of, um, it's almost rhetorical or chicken and the egg for us as well when we look at how we would like to know the scope and the impact. That's part of our scoping process when we do look at some of the boundaries we've done in the past. That being said, we did have, when there were questions about the number of students that were educated in trailers, it was some nineteen thousand as a part of your trailer report and so forth. And those are critical components to look at. When you look at it division-wide versus in one region, what do you include in the region? So that's where we, we try to look at where, where do we, where is it that we should focus on the scope that we can therefore look to see if we can provide the quantitative data that's being requested.
So for example, Sandy has more elementary-age children in, in a, in trailers than any of the rest of us. And so the question is, is our, you know, on the scope of an issue, are we more concerned, just like we were with the rollout of computers? You know, how much does it cost? Who are we gonna give it to first? How many students do, are involved? Do we wanna get elementary kids out of trailers first or high school kids out of? What's, what's the scope of the problem and how severe is it?
So my honest best answer to that is, that's gonna, that is a tremendous amount of work for sixteen factors. We already do it for capacity. We have a color-coded CIP for capacity. We just work to try to do it for travel time where we broke it down by type of kid. But we haven't done it for all sixteen. So you got me there. I'm just saying, my goodness, we could do a lot of that work. I, 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 it would be a lot of work to do that. I'd really love to see the board get closer to what the factors are it most wants that scope and severity for and then we can move forward.
You could leave it and they could parking lot it until we are further down, but I don't want this to get lost.
Okay. Okay.
Or, or Mrs. Schultz, you could bring that back at the next work session after we having a little further discussion on this?
Well, I don't care how you mark it, I just want, for posterity's sake, this has to be discussed because we've got to figure out which problems we wanna solve. And this is part of the prioritization plan, is how big is the problem and how severe is the problem in one area versus another? And if we have 19 times more children having, at elementary age, having a 60-minute or longer bus ride in one region than another, then, and zero in another, that's a, that's a big gap.
So, Mrs. Schultz, could we agree that this will be brought back at the end of next work session to discuss further? And Madame Klar, could you note that? Okay, the next one, number three, is that, does that capture?
Have we, have we talked about number one?
Not yet, we're just gonna check the language, whether that captures your language?
What, schedule at least one more? Yeah.
I, I mean, we're gonna do it. All right? We, we're gonna do that, so I don't worry about it. Number four is Karen Corbin Sanders.
Yeah, I'm worried that we have lost our focus on One Fairfax when we, and that's why, if we can't do it internally, I think it would be helpful, for example, frankly, Dr. Duran should be at the table for this discussion because, and because this really is an equity discussion. And if we just reduce it to things like, well, what do parents think in an individual pyramid? Well, it would probably depend on the situation in that pyramid. And so, we need to bring this discussion up to the higher level, which is what is the objective? And we, when we first brought this up, we talked about One Fairfax as being part of the objective. And based on that, how does that drive the goals of our policy? So it should, and we already have certain things that inform our discussion. It's One Fairfax and it's our strategic plan. Our strategic plan certainly says we wanna get rid of our trailers. And so, we should be having as a goal, getting rid of our trailers because we actually mask our capacity issues by not highlighting not only how many people are in trailers, but how many people are in modulators. And so, I think we really need some help in putting context around this.
So, I am, I am only asking whether that captures your advocacy language itself?
I would actually emphasize first, in light of One Fairfax, the board should consider hiring an external facilitator to holistically address goals and priorities of our boundary policy, to realize the promise of, to realize the FCPS promise.
A facilitator or a subject matter expert?
I would say it should be both, a subject matter expert who is capable of facilitating the discussion.
I just, I don't want it to be just somebody who facilitates a discussion. I think as long as you're with, up with the sme, that's great.
Are we discussing the substance of this now?
No, 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 we are just capturing the language. And, and so, number five, does that capture your language? I'm, I'm only asking Karen Corbin Sanders whether that captures her.
Oh, five? No, that was-
I think that that will come up in the discussion, so you don't necessarily have to do that.
Okay, and now we go to Mrs. McLaughlin, whether that captures?
Ms. Darnett Kofax, didn't you have one about program placement?
I'm asking Megan first, Megan, whether that captures?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's psychosocial, emotional, so, and I know we do have Michelle here from research. Is that something that already got captured and just wasn't presented yet, or?
There's a little bit of it in terms of social connections in the original research brief, and we can clearly probe that further and provide more information. There's some other additional research, since we were focusing primarily in the original brief on the academic impacts. That's why there really is a limited info, a little bit of information, but we can, we can provide additional information.
I appreciate that, but I would just add, Dr. Braybrand, as you know, we have DeeDee Baylor and a whole host of trained psychologists in the school division. And, and certainly it doesn't take research specifically on boundary changes to certainly be able to speak to what happens with mobility on students' psychosocial, emotional impact. And so whether it's moving kids around because of, you know, regrettably, foster care, family mobility, or a boundary change, and I mean, that all kind of is a similar impact. So, if we need to broaden or sees, you know, research gathering to that, that would be helpful. But I appreciate it.
Okay, so does that capture your language? Okay, all right, now we'll do one at a time, I think, I think I, I am gonna go to-
Mr. Moon, we feel, a couple of us had, had talked about different factors, programming, socioeconomic, none of it's up there.
Okay, so, let's, let's put them up there.
Well, I think what we need to do is, is say, I, I think our advocacy is to rewrite policy 8130.
To include?
To include socioeconomic diversity and balance, to include access to curriculum, to include-
After, after school?
Academic achievement and programming, well, I mean, what other people speak.
Curriculum and after-school program.
And after, and, yeah, and school activities, school activity.
So, could I, could I suggest that since we haven't really talked about factors?
Well, this is, this is the goals, this is-
Those are the goals, you wanna put them as the goals.
We're talking about policy 8130.
Okay, because policy 8130 includes all those factors.
Well, what, what we looked at is the, that paragraph on page four does not, so.
And, I mean, current policy includes all those.
Okay, but I guess some of us believe that that first paragraph should include all of this. And that's, that was our advocacy, you know, so.
Paragraph five, that's paragraph number five.
Whatever the paragraph, I think it was on slide four, but, so, you know, I, I'd like this captured if the board agrees. If the board doesn't agree, then we need a longer conversation.
Is that why we're having another conversation?
Yes, which is why we're trying to capture some of it.
I think she heard me.
No, that should be recorded. Okay, so we're gonna do one at a time, one at a time, but I think I'm gonna start with the number four because that's, that's the, that's the big decision. So if you're gonna hire, I don't know whether this is the advocacy from Ms. Corbin Sanders, if you're gonna hire outside consultant to do, now from this point and on, then the rest of them may be moot. So we'll just hire somebody else to do the rest of the work. So, so I wanna, so I wanna start with that, that discussion, whether, 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 what decision we are making with the number four, okay? So, I wanna, I wanna hear from Karen Corbin Sanders, because that's our advocacy, clarify what you're advocating so that, so that we don't duplicate the work.
Okay. Number four doesn't truncate the work, the rest of the work of the board. What it does is create a framework for us to work together to realize a policy and all of this, basically to begin a much more holistic approach with equity in mind. And so it's not ignoring what's in item six. It actually is bringing that into the conversation using an external resource to help us get there.
If I could, if I could help the board on this one. Marty, remind me, there was something we did a year ago where we did an initial amount of work and then we shared it with an outside consultant to inform and do sort of a cross-check of work we had done.
Yes, we did that with our hiring practices. So we did a lot of work internally and had another group, a third party, look at the material.
So we could, we could take it with that spirit where we could continue to do work, but we could also reach out to a third party to come in and provide that final check or final review before we got, or work with the board. Sure, again, I'm just saying, we could do complete stop, or we could work with a third party group to-
Okay, I know, I know, that's your suggestion, but I'm just asking, asking advocate to, because we're gonna be hold- let me finish, because as the staff is trying to schedule a, a next work session, and also if you need to hire outside, whether that outside consultant should be hired prior to the next work session so that that person can come in and start working with us, that, I think I'm, I'm asking for your advocacy.
So, that's why it says hiring an external subject matter expert slash facilitator because the, I anticipate that this board is going and staff will work together to, with this external resource and take it to the next level. And maybe the best person to ask right now is whether or not Mr. Smith or Mr. Plattenberg think that this is a good idea, but from my perspective, we've heard from FPAC repeatedly for a number of years how important it is. We've got the work that's been brought to us today, but it is somewhat absent of the One Fairfax discussion or the One Fairfax lens. And I think we need the ability to bring it all together and have a, to take it to the next level. So that's why it is an expert slash facilitator to holistically address the goals and priorities. So if that were the next step, then we may then push off having another work session a couple of months until we have someone working with us to be able to frame the discussion.
So now I think I understand your, your advocacy, secure someone before we schedule next one, okay? I got that. I have Ms. Evans to be followed by Ms. Darnett Kofax and Mr. Wilson.
So, I, the first thing I'm gonna say is that the One Fairfax, I believe, should be included in number six because that's, that's an overarching issue as well. And I would say, I, I see where you're going with this, Ms. Corbin Sanders. I, I think I would maybe turn this around. We do have people who not only, you know, know our boundaries and know us. So I, I would suggest that we ask staff to come back with a draft for us to take a look at. I mean, I realize we've had a long conversation here and it's gonna be difficult to incorporate everything that, that all members want or a majority of members want. But rather than delay our, our conversation on that, I, I would suggest that the, the staff bring us back a draft and, you know, perhaps with, well, as Dr. Braybrand said, maybe run it by anyone that they considered a, a particular expert in the field. I, I guess I'm thinking that it's, we may, we, it would be better and more efficient to do it the other way around. Ask our staff to bring us back a rewrite, take a look at it, and then if we feel we needed to go to another level at that point, go to an, go to an outside expert, but I, that would be my advocacy.
Okay, I have Mr. Darnett Kofax.
I, I'm, I don't, I'm somewhere like in between Ms. Evans and Ms. Corbin Sanders. I, I believe maybe we could have a, a, another board conversation, but then at, at that point, I feel like, like we're at a point today where we kind of need to digest the information, kind of look at it, and then have one more board conversation and, and then, but in the interim staff, and maybe at that point, staff can kind of bring back and say, you know, this is, this is who we're looking at. I, I, you know, so it, it's just a timing issue and you may have not been able to articulate that. And Mr. Plattenberg, I guess if, 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 you know, you and your staff, Mr. Smith as well, like if you think that's a good thing, like to have one more kind of, yeah, one more-
I'm bringing in external supports.
Well, at, at, at that point, maybe bringing in external support, names of external supports, or this is our tentative plan at the next, like scheduling the next meeting and then having the opportunity for us to think about that. I don't want any, I would like one more kind of just board meeting before we kind of go in with this. And I'm just kind of looking to staff to see, because you, we had talked about this often, you know, the need to bring in an outside staff to, to kind of help us through this. I, I guess, asking you, Jeff, is you think this is the time where you think we can kind of push back? Or I, I, I want your, your expertise to weigh in as far as timing.
Well, thank you. Couple things I really think about. First of all, I think the ask that's now growing about having staff go ahead and provide some outside consultant if they exist. I only know of one that does planning for other organizations. I know the rest of the organizations do provide some kind of input on how important it is to have the professional staff and expertise that we have. But at the end of the day, I think Mr. Moon said it, is to help us go ahead and develop our own policy. And I, and I think there really is, there are a number of different moving things that, how do we continue to exist and operate within the environment that we have to go ahead and make the small changes without a long-term impact while we go ahead and address this larger issue that we're discussing? And I, I really do believe, while I would think that another work session would be of great benefit because it seems a little klugey to me right now to try and put my head around how to go ahead and do an RFP for that type of organizational, I, I tried to do parallels, right? And I was talking with Mr. Smith about strategic plans. And when you talked about HR, those HR processes, those are pretty regulated and are regular, so are more attainable, and, and may not comport. More of a strategic plan, superintendent search kind of thing, right? Those groups of gathering the information as to what you're meeting with individual board members about what they might see and then categorizing them, then reporting back. You know, these are the ones that each of you felt at different times and reflecting those, that, that feedback and much more granularity so you can pluck out the common threads to then weave the fabric of the quilt that would be Fairfax County and the One Fairfax. You know, that's where my mind goes on this, but this, this, again, this is as of this work session. Because I'm thinking of multiple things, I'd like to continue doing the work of boundary adjustments in the CIP. That's because I'm used to getting things done. If, if it's the pleasure of this body, put that on hold, I'm, I'm, I'm good with it. However, those issues, I know, but I'm thinking about multiple things. And so then I'm thinking, how do we go ahead and continue the work while we go ahead and get this broader framework discussion, whether it's us having another day to fine tune it and us providing some reflective thought afterwards and recommendations for another work session? With the understanding that it may be ultimately to go ahead and bring somebody in on board and what that might look like? I'm just throwing some feedback out there.
So, I'd like to do one more, and then I think we can have it a little tighter to tee up whatever we would have for a third party person if the board wants to bring that third party in. But I think, one more time with you all, just to sharpen it a little bit, I think there's enough strands of what we heard today that we can go back that gives us something to work with to put something a little sharper, not that what we didn't bring you wasn't good, but just to help clarify what we heard today, and then we can use that as a departure point for a third party group. Marty, do you have a different opinion, which I welcome if it's different from mine, obviously?
No, no, it's, it's the same opinion, and I think that in terms of guidance for us, so we've been talking about a lot these past few meetings. We've talked about looking for guidance for priorities. We've looked at factors, we've talked about goals today. We pulled a, a one paragraph from the policy to sort of juxtapose what we're doing versus where we might go. And now we're having a discussion about the policy and perhaps rewording the policy. And I think that when we, when we go back to the original purpose for our work, it was looking at that section nine for implementing considerations, where we had several considerations. There were 16 factors. And we wanted some guidance on which of those factors would be the primary factors that we would look at as we were considering these types of changes. And so, in coming back to the board, I would like the board's permission to possibly take us back to that portion of the policy and not disregard any other aspect of the policy or any other paragraphs or wording that we might want to consider, but to take us back to those implementing considerations as a way to maybe re-ground our work? And then look at that in the framework of changing the overall policy, changing the language of the policies, changing, and perhaps providing additional information to a third party to give us additional guidance. But I would like to see if we could come back to that section nine that has everything that we've listed here as part of the, the areas that were in best practices or that were supported by research that were in blue, they're in our policy, to have that conversation about those items so that we can look at that lens. That lens of what's most important. And I think that if we go to, to an outside consultant, we're probably going to hear that capacity is a major driver and a major factor that we see across the country. We're, we're going to hear that socioeconomic diversity is one of those areas that we should probably consider as we look at boundary adjustments.
probably consider as we look at boundary adjustments. And however you call it, proximity, neighborhood building, travel time, that, that proximity to create those neighborhood and those community schools would be an important factor to consider. So I feel good about the work that we've done and I certainly would welcome additional eyes to, to give us additional validation or, or feedback. But I have a strong feeling that it's going to take us right back to where we are, which then takes us to section nine focusing on those implementation considerations. So I, I wanted to bring that into the room so that we could frame the next discussion to maybe perhaps bring us back to that area.
Okay. I have Mr. Wilson to be part of, Mrs. Strauss. I'm trying to wrap this thing up pretty quickly.
Thank you. So I'm going to go back to very early moments of our meeting and Dr. Braybrand said, you know, these are, these are discussions where the board is going to go deeper than prior boards have in terms of discussing issues. You know, these, and you also mentioned brave conversations, big changes. Ms. Corbett Sanders has mentioned looking holistically, sort of a big picture, big part of the county. I, I think that, you know, to the klugey issue that Mr. Plattenberg mentioned, I think we need to maybe hear from the superintendent, but what are, what are the, I think to, to the better frame for our conversation isn't a consultant. It's understanding what it is that as a superintendent, where are those big changes that you see down the road in, in four or five years that we need, we are going to need to make to both address academic issues and issues that are raised by One Fairfax? So that we can then, then we can get back to, you know, really discussing what is it in the policy that we need to change? Because I come back to my initial point, which is maybe the policy's got a lot of stuff in it that covers the bases and we just need to make a reference to One Fairfax. That may not be the answer. I don't think the answer is hiring a consultant. These are conversations we can have. As a matter of fact, not too long ago, a couple of meetings ago, we had a conversation and decided to reopen the issue of renaming our schools that are named after Confederate soldiers. And we just had a conversation and made the decision. I think we, we've got to like hold our own feet to the fire and have these conversations.
So. I'd like another meeting to take another crack at tweaking the policy and, and, and presenting you some sort of tiered set of factors. The current policy in section nine has the implementing considerations, which are 16 factors. I believe they're too many. The research we showed you is eight of them don't even have anything grounded in academic research. Let's put a One Fairfax lens on that policy and then let's either go out to do community engagement so that the community understands why we're doing what we're doing before we make additional boundary decisions, or bring a third-party person in for a final check to do that final check, or engagement with us as well with the community. But I'd like one more shot at just sort of doing a little nip and tuck to the policy to firm it up with the, okay, that's not the appropriate language, I'm sorry. I know, I, sometimes you can't, the words just escape. I'd like to be able to take one more shot at making the policy a little crisper and take the spirit of today, which is the One Fairfax lens, some sort of prioritization, and the, the spirit of number six and number five. Let us take it and have one more meeting and then we can really decide the, the role and extent, if necessary, of a third-party. That's what I'd honestly say. And at the end of the third meeting, I think there'll be greater clarity on both the board and maybe even on staff about what is a third-party vendor needed or a third-party collaborator needed? And then if so, to what extent and in what areas do they need to engage us? That's my, that's my most honest assessment at 4:10.
Okay. So I have Mrs. Strauss next and then, and then we'll make a decision on this number four.
Okay. I will agree with Dr. Braybrand in going forward with this. I, however, I do think at some point, and I will no longer be here, when we have to build the new high school out at Innovation Station, I think at that point, this board's going to need to hire a consultant because that will open all of the boundaries. It'll open Langley, Herndon, West, Westfield, Chantilly, possibly others. It would be a huge opportunity to do a lot, and it's going to have to involve a lot of reshuffling. That's going to take a lot of time, a lot of planning. And I believe in the CIP, you do foreshadow that because you take a look at by 2028, needing to take a look at that.
And if I could, just for the spirit of moving the board along, right now it just says the board should consider. It doesn't require the board, it doesn't require me. We have time. If there's consensus to have another work session, you can decide that ultimately after our next work, work session.
I'm fine with waiting until after the next work session, but I would caution my colleagues that if we wait until 2028 when there's a new high school being built, we have just abandoned one whole half of the county, which is currently facing challenges because of boundary changes that have taken place in the past.
Right. And that's what I say. Doing something to prepare for that makes huge sense because there's a lot of change and the huge development that's coming there.
No, I understand that, but there's huge development, but there's also been huge inequities that have occurred. And so we actually have to be honest in assessing what the impact has been in some of these decisions of the past. And so rather than waiting until 2028, I will continue to advocate that One Fairfax lens requires us to look at these things sooner rather than later.
Okay. With that, we're going to, so if I understood you correctly, Ms. Corbett Sanders, that you wouldn't mind waiting that decision until after we do one more work session? Is that?
I was fine with that, with the beginning. I don't care when we make that decision, but it needs.
So with that, with, with that understanding, we don't have to actually decide on doing this until we do another work session? So let's put that in the parking lot, just like, just like number two. Is that fair? Okay. Thank, any objection?
These should not be deleted. These needs to be brought.
No, no, just bring it back, will be brought back. We're not deleting it. Will be brought back at the next work session. Okay? So, so with, okay, with there being no objection, they will be brought back after the work session, after the next work session. Now we're going to go to number one.
Mr. Moon, may I recommend that, I guess, rather than writing out, we just put them in parentheses? I think that addresses the fact that we're bringing them back.
Yeah, we are bringing two and four back. I don't know how Madam Klaug will notate that. So we go to number one. Mr. Wilson, if he could just clarify your advocacy, how do you want the superintendent to do that?
Yeah, I mean, I think survey would be the method, if that's what you're asking.
No, no, so what the factors and priorities, so I mean, I mean, how would you expect him to conduct that? On what factors? Just open-ended factors or?
Well, I mean, I guess the factors and priorities with respect to their school would, surveying parents for what's important to them.
Okay. So it's open-ended, basically.
Wow. I mean, I think we do have 16 factors, right?
Okay.
So, so, yeah, we could add and delete. And, and I think it's important to, whenever you're surveying parents, to contextualize it so that they would say, if you're doing like a one to five in terms of like intensity of feeling, you feel so strongly about this, you would be willing to move your child to a different school, right? That might be max intensity. So that we have a sense of what is important and why it's important and what are the factors? So that would be the, the reason for that.
Okay. So, may I, just in order to facilitate the discussion, I know you have, I have you on the list. Okay. I was going to add on to what he says. Is, so you mentioned about 16 factors and superintendents have also heard from various different board members of additional factors they want the board to consider? Do you think we can put them all those for each school, community to consider and provide the input?
I think I, I mean, I don't want to get into the details. I think I would leave it up.
Just leave it up to superintendent.
The superintendent to come up with meaningful data for us to look at.
Okay. That's fair. Okay?
I, I appreciate the suggestion, but I just don't feel like we're at that point. If we're having another work session, it seems to me we need to hone things down before we start surveying parents. That's my personal feeling.
Okay. Okay. So that, that's Mr. Wilson's advocacy. We have all heard that, we have one opinion on that advocacy. Any other board members?
I fully support parents being surveyed, but I don't think we're at that point right now.
I'd be willing to delete the word now. I think that's, I think that is sort of, that there's a little bit too much immediacy there. It's like tomorrow.
Mr. Wilson, I guess my thought on that would be is, my understanding, I'm happy to put it in writing, is that, you know, parent survey and, you know, outreach needs to be included in the proposed plans moving forward, right? Whether we're doing it, whether a consultant's doing it, it needs to be incorporated.
Yeah, that's a little bit different than what I'm thinking. Because I think that goes to sort of more of what I described, which is parents learn of a decision of the board and then we have community engagement to get their input on the implementation of a decision. This is, this is intended to, if we're heading into deep waters with big decisions, with serious conversations, we need to get the input of our parents as part of that discussion.
But I, I just feel like we have to clarify what we're asking. I mean, we're having difficulty ironing things down here. So as a board, don't we have to be able to say, what are we asking our parents? Or I'm not sure we're at that point.
I have Mr. Schultz and Ms. Corbett Sanders next.
This was not exactly the same, but this was partially my advocacy too. My thought is, is that we're talking about eliminating factors, adding in factors, what's a factor, what's a goal? If you start narrowing the field of what we're going to consider in, in whatever it is we're going to, and we haven't received public input, I think we are verging on another decision path of we've already made up our minds and we're back-ending public input. And, and I think you can always survey them again later as you refine the process, but I don't think if we don't take the temperature of where people are now with, I don't care if you put eight, 10, 16, or 122 factors down, it should be all put on the table and we should get a sense of our communities who we're supposed to be representing, how do they feel about, you know, the superintendent deploying operationally boundary changes with X, Y, and Z and all the, all the way through to AAA, B, and C or whatever factors? And if we don't ever test the waters and we take things off the table at the outset and we're refining the process and then decide to get public input, we, talk about cart before the horse. So no, I'm, I'm in favor of the, I don't know if now is the right word, but it, it's not a delay. We have to figure out what the public thinks about this because you're talking about rebounding people based on, you know, certain goals. And I don't even know what those goals are because they haven't been exactly stipulated, but there's certainly a direction that's been inclined to be promoted.
Since we are 15 minutes behind, I have one, two, three, now four members on the list on just this one. If, unless, may I ask board members, unless you're providing something different than what's been already stated by some other board members? Because we're going to vote on this, vote on this. You know, hopefully you don't have to speak. I have Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Perchek, and Mrs. McLaughlin.
So I'm all for public engagement. My concern with this as written is we really don't know what we're engaging the public on. And if we list the 16 factors that are currently in the policy, the problem is today, we actually are not adhering to our policy because we have 16 factors and then we just decide which ones are a priority for any given boundary. And so my concern would be that we are sending a message that these 16 factors are always going to be adhered to. And that is not necessarily the truth in how we currently do boundaries. And so we pick and choose today, not we, but they've been, it has been used to pick and choose. And so I, I do believe we need to engage the public on it. That's one of the reasons why I've advocated for an expert facilitator to work with us on it because part of that would be engaging the public. I would suggest that this is another one where we put it in the, bring it back to the next work session once we have a little more clarity as to what we are doing and what we're not doing.
Okay. Ms. Perchek and Mrs. McLaughlin.
Yeah, just very briefly, I, I think we're all getting to the same point. I think definitely want to include and get the, the public input, community input, 100% agree with that. My only concerns with specifically the way this is worded is A, having more clarity on the what, but also who is it that we're going to survey? Mr. McAlveen likely will not receive the survey, whereas it will impact his daughter several years down the line. Community members who maybe are not on our current list will not be surveyed if we just send it out to our current list and it will have the biggest impact on those families as well as, you know, homeowners and people in the community. So I just want us to get more clarity on what we're surveying, who we're surveying, and what the goal of that information will be used for. That's all.
Okay. Ms. Perchek? Done with Mrs. McLaughlin?
I want to sort of echo what Ms. Palchuk just said. Without question, in support of Mr. Wilson, Ms. Schultz, Ms. Corbett Sanders, many, many of us have all said we, we think the community is going to be a key piece of it. I, I do think that by bringing this one back along with a couple of the others we've identified, we absolutely buy the next work session. If we're starting to refine what we think through research and best practice are the key factors, then I think we then need to define for the superintendent our expectations on how to engage. And Mr. Wilson has suggested survey. I actually think this is without question, we know how people feel about boundaries. This would be the town hall listening tour or whatever we've done on other big issues that face the county. That is when we get a chance to bring what I would hope is thoughtful, streamlined information to the community and then have them provide the feedback, kind of like maybe the FCPS ON. But I only use that as just a model of how we go and have community meetings around the district. And Mr. Wilson, I would still support a survey for those who don't have time and ability to come out. But I think this is a county-wide conversation. I think that we would partner with our board supervisors and have them put it out in their newsletters. And I, this, this is probably behind our strategic plan development and our portrait of a graduate development, one of the key constituency issues that we've got to engage Fairfax County on. And in the interim, I think, you know, Mr. Plattenberg knows he's heard that we can't just sit for another year or more pushing the can down the road. We do the smaller boundary changes as needed to address the capacity challenges that are facing the district. But I think that we owe it to the community feel that they were a part of this conversation on massive boundary.
Okay. So could, so would that being the last one on my list on this one, could I? Okay. Ms. Evans?
I think any survey has to be meaningful. And at this point, we don't know what we're asking people and how we're going to reach those that may be the most affected by equity issues. So I would suggest that we ask the, if, if we want to survey, I think we should ask staff to bring us back a draft.
Okay. So could we, could we do this, just like the other two? Could we put this in the parking lot, bring it back at the end of next work session? About another round of discussion because we simply ran out of time to finish it with our conversation today?
Mr. Moon, it, it sounds like there is sort of a majority on the board that would favor that. But I, I do like the idea of getting staff started on drafting a potential survey. I mean, we, it's not that we have no information on which to create a survey. We do have an existing policy that we're considering changing with, with identified factors. So I would, I would like staff to get started on the draft of a survey. I also really do appreciate the suggestion that this is more than just a school issue. This is our entire Fairfax community and I think partnering with the, the board of supervisors on. community. And I think partnering with the, the board of supervisors on, on gathering information from our communities would be very valuable as well.
So could we, could we take the suggestion that, you know, ask a superintendent to start working on survey and detail could be filled out later?
I think it's pretty much a date.
Okay, let's take a vote on this, all right? Take a vote on this. Is, I guess what I'm gonna put out on the table is put this into the parking lot until after the next work session. So, so we're not, we're not killing the survey today. Okay, so who could support that? Bring it back at the next work session. Okay, thank you. I think that goes. And then, and then we have, we, okay, three, three, we're gonna, we're gonna schedule, we're gonna schedule the work session. So three is moot. And the, the last one is, no, last two, is the number five is a step to provide information. And, and has any objection for step providing? Can staff provide the information? Okay, so, so that, that, okay.
Again, Mr. Moon, that, the point being, it should be a factor, but we don't seem to really have the information on it.
Okay, thank you. And number six, rewrite policy including that. Could I suggest that now for the next discussion? Because we talked about goals and factors and how to do them. Could we task a superintendent just to propose draft a new policy? Draft a new policy and we start, yeah, whole thing, whole thing. Whole new policy drafted and then we'll discuss from the draft.
And I, I would like to capture that these things would be included.
Yes, including, including those, draft his policy. Draft. Could he?
No, 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 do not take that out.
Do not take, including those, including those.
So it's draft, just rather than rewrite, draft.
Yeah.
Okay, but why those things and not any of the other things that any of the rest of us have put on the list?
I mean, just, I'm, I'm just putting it out as a straw man proposal to provoke your thought.
What do you want, Elizabeth? No, I think Mr. Moon, what was captured was a lot of us were saying staff has identified eight of the 16 factors are captured in research. So at minimum, doesn't have to be exclusive, but at minimum, you can say that the stat, the board would like to see these considered as part of the rewrite as well as the eight factors rooted in research. Because, I mean, otherwise, I, I agree that you don't want to just say it's only these things. I mean...
No, 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 including those, you know, come up with a draft so that we could have a, start having a conversation on policy, on the policy at the next work session.
The only question I have, Mr. Moon, is that the slide that was shown to us from the February work session, it was said that that was not, that those additional items were never voted on. And now we're talking about rewriting a policy and draft, adding those things that were never voted on before. And so much was talked about today that we haven't covered, like surveying of the public and the scope and the severity of problems and, and prioritizing, you know, an overcrowded school versus a child on a trail. I mean, so why are we, this is now we're leaping several steps ahead to rewriting the policy when now we're talking about at the next session, we're gonna consider hiring a subject matter expert to help us rewrite the policy. So why are we redrafting the policy now? I mean, it seems like, you know, in the game of life, we jump to, like you have children before you, you know, graduate high school.
Okay, that's, again, that's a straw man proposal since we need to wrap up this work session and that's the last one standing. Okay, so, so that's, okay. So could we?
I think this should be parking lot, Mr. Moon.
Can I suggest, can I offer a friendly amendment to number six, which would be staff to provide recommendations on how these criteria could be included?
So basically, basically asking staff...
Not rewriting the whole thing, but rather recommendations, you know, if we go back to what we learned a month ago, staff did look at our existing 16 factors and said, hold on a second, of the 16, only eight of them were substantiated by best practices. And so what we're saying is we've never real, and some of that is up there already socioeconomic, but we didn't ask them to look at it from the lens of One Fairfax.
Well, I would, I would...
College, college, we are 4:30, one hour behind. We haven't really come to any decision on any of the factors or any of the goals. Could we now at this point ask a superintendent to provide us with his best thinking and then we can have, we can have, you know, one, two, three, four rounds of discussion? So, because we have not come up with any decision, any consensus, which is okay, because I knew that this was gonna take a long time, many this, you know, many work sessions to come to resolution. So let's see whether we can get their best thinking and, and then we can react to that. Could we do that? Okay, is there objection?
Well...
I mean, we'll leave that up to superintendent? Because I think all the board members are asking for different things at this point and we haven't really had a chance to discuss that. So give that task to superintendent.
I'm fine with leaving that to the superintendent, but I, I would like to see a, a draft. You know, I think that would at least give us a starting point.
So he's gonna give us a draft and then we're gonna react to that. We're gonna put a lot of advocacies will be, and hopefully we'll get that way before the work session so that we can all have enough time to think about coming up with their suggestive changes. Yes, ma'am?
My, I have no problem with that as long as it isn't considering the discussion we had today. A lot of, the part of reason we had to write six is none of the things that have been said were listed up there.
Number three.
That's prior to the drafting of a policy, right?
So, again, superintendent has heard from 11 turbo bus throughout, I guess for the last three hours. Could we task him to come up with the best of thinking?
No.
So it's either, either, either you, either we are tasking him to do it or we're not tasking him to do it. Okay, I will, I will do, take us, okay, we'll, okay, we'll decide. Those who are in favor of tasking superintendent to craft a draft so that we could have a conversation at the next work session, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay, I think that passes. Okay, thank you. With that, this work session is adjourned. Thank for your patience. Thank for your participation. We'll take a five-minute break.
I'd like to get a sense of folks when they need to leave tonight because we have a number of things left to discuss that are important issues. So, so if, if anyone has time constraints, please let us know.
It do close quite yet because we're waiting for someone to arrive and there are two items enclosed that we have to talk about.
5:30 is that?
5:30.
Okay, but I mean, looking around, I don't see people with, with time constraints that are raising them. I know I need to leave by six. Okay.
So could we, could we do AAP discussion, truncate that in one hour?
Part A, part B.
Yes.
No, part A, part B. It just means we do what we can now and then...
Sure, of course.
I think it means...
So either, either we, we, we cancel AAP discussion and wait until 5:30, not doing anything, or we start AAP and do what we can until 5:30 and we call 5:30 a hard stop for closed meeting?
Well, if there's a presentation, certainly.
Okay.
As I, I, I want to speak, as long as we can have a comprehensive conversation. So if it is not done at far, 5:30, we will continue.
Sure.
No, 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 no. We'll, we'll have a part B.
Schedule a second work session.
A sec, second session.
We'll have another work session, which knowing this topic, this two hours wouldn't even be enough.
Sure. So we'll take a five-minute break and then come back.
Okay, and yes, we'll have a hard stop at 5:30.
Okay, thank you.